Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen's meeting and I'd like to call the meeting to order for Monday, August 19th, 2013. And if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I will run through the agenda now of what we have planned for tonight. We're going to go through, read mail, and then at 7:10 we'll have public input and board member updates. At 7:15, we are going to have two items for disclosure determination for a member of the Littleton Commons sewer feasibility study committee, and then we're going to discuss an interview of candidates for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. At 7:45, we have Doug Halli from Acton coming in to talk about an intermunicipal agreement for the crosstown connect transportation management. At 8 o'clock, we have a public hearing for a liquor license violation. At 8:20, we have the town administrator who will update us on, town administrator and assistant town administrator for financing budget to update us on several items. At 8:55, we have other business, and at 9 o'clock, we're scheduled for executive session for litigation strategy. With that, Keith, what do you have for me?
Mr. Chairman, a few things. First, we have an update from zoning bylaw working group, which consists of members of this board, planning board, and agricultural commission, indicating there's a joint meeting of the planning board this Thursday, August 22nd, at 8:00 PM, when the work of the zoning bylaw working group on a proposed zoning bylaw for census recreation will be reviewed. So, in anticipation of that, if there's the form of our board, we're hosting it as a selectance meeting as well, but it is a joint meeting between the two boards, and other interested parties. And we have a, in the packet, a copy of the current draft of the proposed zoning amendment. The goal is to complete work on that soon, and then have the planning board have a public hearing in September through anticipation of bringing something to the November 4th special town meeting. And we'll open that warrant later tonight, the warrant will close on September 20th, so focus to finalize the version of the text before then to get it in.
Question on that one, too. How wide is the distribution of the draft right now? How many town boards and et cetera has it been distributed to?
I'm not aware that the planning office has distributed it beyond the boards they're working on.
I believe it's the board, the Board of Selectmen, the planning board, and the agricultural. Did you guys all, everybody agree with me? I believe that's the distribution right now.
We can, I mean, we have the current draft, I can post that current draft with the update of town meetings, if folks want to take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fine the way it is. I mean, Thursday night, we're going to finalize draft a little bit and get it out there, but either way, whatever the board feels. Is that where you were going with this, to distribute it more or to get it out?
Well, I wasn't sure. You know, I didn't remember how many people were on the distribution list, I was just not sure how many, how many people had gotten to. And the comments are going back to planning board, right?
They are, yeah.
Marin is the coordinator for, or is the staff contact for that project? So, I wouldn't mind much, we have a working draft at this point, whether, you know, if anybody sees it. I read two versions of it, and, you know, it's a little confusing at this point, but I certainly wouldn't mind if the public or any other board or committee wanted to have a look at it.
We have the draft document, we don't have the reader's guide yet, though, to it.
Yeah, it is a little difficult, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we wait till we have the draft, I mean, this is the committee reporting back to the planning board, so the, you know, the planning board hasn't a chance to even review it necessarily, but either way, what makes available somewhere? What else we have?
Okay, next we have a report from the chief of police addressing the board's goal on commercial vehicle enforcement and idling of vehicles. Receiving a report tonight, if you'd like to schedule it as an agenda item for discussion at a future time, we could do that. It wasn't on the agenda, but it's in a mail packet, for starters, and we could schedule that for future consideration. Next, we have a letter that was received from residents of the Shoboke Road with their further comments about that lovely construction project. And I know that, but we did have a briefing at a recent meeting here, that there was a follow-up, a butters meeting that was held, and that some of the members of this board attended that. So, yeah. So, that's what's in this packet, and I wanted to bring to your attention a couple of other things that have been developing this afternoon. First is that I'm pleased to say that the police chief has reached an agreement, and we're in the process of getting signatures on it, for transferring ownership for the remaining two dogs, for both the Atari and walkers. And so, we're working the specifics of that out as a written agreement, and we hope to have all of the signatures in place. The chief will be here later, there he is, he's there right now, can't answer questions. Hey, you're early. So, but I wanted to thank the chief for his efforts there. Anything you want to say about where they're going?
They are going to a rescue that specializes in furries mountain dogs, and this is a subcategory of that dog or that breed. It's a 122-acre rescue, it's run by a medical doctor and her husband, and they've been doing it for 12 years. They have a staff of about six, and they're really looking forward to getting the dogs to either keep as their own or to adopt out.
And it's located?
Excuse me, Ohio.
Ohio, so.
Chair, who's bearing the cost of getting them to Ohio?
Who's bearing the cost?
Yes.
Meg Mazzoni, I just talked to her on the way in, she's on vacation in Maine, she's working with a shelter group out of Acton to do the transport.
And thanks, chief, for that, all that effort to bring that about. The other, the other thing I wanted to update you on, and I'd suggest that we schedule this matter for future agenda, perhaps with a meeting with the planning board as well, but this Thursday, August 22nd, is the Massachusetts Department of Public Health's deadline, or actually, there's a window of opportunity on that day, when applications for medical marijuana dispensaries are to be submitted. And it's like a finite window from 10:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon, applications to be hand-delivered. Medical dispensaries are comprised of where you sell it and where you grow it, the latter being called a cultivation site. We've been made aware, and it was just confirmed this afternoon, that it looks like there will be a proposed cultivation site in one of the applications that goes in on Thursday for a site in Littleton. And the location is 263 King Street, I'll post some information about this with my meeting update for reference. The owner of the property and the proposed licensee for the state license have indicated their availability to meet with, you know, town officials. I haven't met either one of them, we've been dealing with a representative of the, who was only today told me who his client is. So, we would be able to perhaps schedule a meeting with, I would suggest with the planning board, as well as the Board of Selectmen. We are currently under a zoning moratorium for medical marijuana facilities in Littleton that we adopted, at our Maytown meeting, adopted a moratorium through June 30 of 2014, which Town Council indicates would be in effect even for this proposed cultivation site. But it's clearly a topic that will engender a lot of discussion and interest, and that we will get up to speed on what is involved with it. And this, again, presumes that there's an official application that goes in during that window on Thursday, but we've been led to the lead today that that's likely to happen. But the owner of the property and the proposed licensee are both available, will be available to meet with town boards to discuss it, so we schedule a future meeting.
And there's no issue with the fact that we have the moratorium and that they're submitting it?
Well, there is, we've made them aware that they couldn't exercise the cultivation site until June 30. It's not clear when the state would actually be issuing licenses. And I've talked to several councils who are dealing with this issue, our own town council and councils who are advising other communities, and I've been made aware that it is not at all unusual in what's happening for the cultivation sites to be located in more rural areas, in towns where there is not also dispensary site, that they're, that the circumstance of describing here is something that could also happen, is apparently happening elsewhere. So, we'll schedule some quality time.
Are there, are there a number of sites that are going to be authorized, now that that law has actually come out? I guess we should take a peek at it.
Yeah, we could see, it's certainly, it's more than, you know, it's more than one, whether it's, you know, done on a regional basis or whatever, we'll have to become more familiar with, but that's the information that we have now, so. And I didn't even say we should have a joint meeting of the planning board about this.
No, I didn't.
Because that's just the sort of thing I was.
What's the, what's pleasure, do we want to invite them in to hear something more? Or do we want to wait for more information?
We meet with, yeah, we meet with the planning board on Thursday night, if it happens. I'd be happy to offer Thursday night as a time, assuming that works for the planning board as well. The chair of the planning board is, I think, in a butter, two in a butter, and would need to accuse himself from that discussion, but, but assuming that we have time, I think the more information we can get, the sooner we can get the information better, so.
Will they be prepared for that meeting, though?
I would, I'd say if we ask, there will be, if there's an application that's going in, it will go in during the day on Thursday, so someone can talk to us about what happened, what, you know, what happened on Thursday.
Do you know what the process was?
Tell us Thursday night.
Or even if they don't have a dog and pony show, there should be someone should be there.
Just to, I think, assuming that we familiarize ourselves with what they're proposing, the more we'll know.
All right, if we can't do that on Thursday, then we'll put it on for sometime for us in September, then maybe early October.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. With that, I'll open up the floor to public input.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Gem Stack, Oakley Road. I know that you have tabled some of the appointments for the new boards and committees that you are going to be forming, but I did just want to make a couple of thoughts, share a couple of thoughts with the board, if please.
Sure.
I know that you're going to be looking at one board tonight and a couple of, another, the other rest of the boards, I'm not sure when, I don't think you mentioned that earlier. And I just wanted to strongly encourage the board to look beyond the familiar faces and names when making appointments to these new committees, while maybe enticing for y'all to choose applicants that you already know. These new committees are a really great chance for us to bring new faces and new ideas in front of the community. I know that, Mr. Chair, I know that you indicated during the discussion at last week's meeting regarding special municipal employees, that when it comes to appointments of boards and committees, you would lean towards a person who's not on any board over someone who's going for maybe a second or a third board, and I really think that's very commendable. And I sincerely hope that the rest of the board will support you in that commitment to appoint new volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just for reference, I didn't talk about it yet, but we received 45 applications for the four boards by the deadline on Friday, and then we got a couple more. And, you know, we had 15 for one, and we only have 30 minutes allotted tonight. I think a lot of us were expecting was to see six or seven for each committee, and then we could just, you know, take a look at, take a look at the people that are applications, talk to them, and appoint them all at once. But with 15, I don't know if we want that many other committees, and we were, whittled it down a little bit, and some people have applied for more than one, so we can, you know, maybe people say, "Well, I don't want to be on that one anymore, and I don't want to be on different ones." So, but the thing was about tonight, we did take bicycling and pedestrian advisory committee, put that on, we have nine applicants, so we figured we could at least use the time to knock a couple of those off. And I'll keep moving so that we can get to that. So, do we have any board member updates? Alex?
I have nothing.
Joe?
Just that, once again, we had a very successful year as far as third Thursdays go. We completed our last third Thursday, once again, everything went well, and the parking rack will be making a donation to the 300th committee for the proceeds that they made this year. Last year, they had to buy signage and shirts and everything else, but this year they had some money, so. The extent of the donation, I don't know, but it's nice to see that the third Thursday is actually helping out a celebration that's coming along next year, so. I think everyone enjoyed it, too, if people get out to see each other, and you have different vendors there and different games being played, so overall, I think it was a very successful year, getting set for next year's celebration.
Yep. I'll have to tie to that, I'll be going next, I got to start going first, so I can get these things out first and make them sound like I actually got them. But I want to congratulate you, Joe, I think you started this whole third Thursday thing, so if there's anybody to thank, it's Joe. So, I appreciate it, and I think you're doing a great job with that, funding that 300 committee, but.
It's the parking rack that's doing it.
Parking, yeah, I want to congratulate Parking Rack, who put all the work together. I think they've done a great job and is very well organized. And, you know, a couple of my experiences out there, I was talking to one friend who was a small business owner, and another friend came up, was a small business owner, and they started talking to each other, and it turns out they're going to try and do some work, some work sharing, so the one can do some work for the other, and they can do some work, and really help small businesses. And I thought that was, that was great. And I'll just go on from there. Joe?
Yes, I would like to remind people of the open house tomorrow evening at 7:00 at the fire station to hear about their proposed construction. On Wednesday at 6:30, the Littleton Historical Society is having a peach social, which is free and open to the public. Sunday is the very last day that the lake will be fully operational with, you know, the little shack there, and the bathrooms, and the lifeguard, so it's till the end of this week that you have that. And I would like to also recognize a very dedicated young woman who's sitting in the back row, Kelly Davis, if you would please stand up. She is and has been a Girl Scout, as you can tell by her patchwork on her vest, for a long time. She'll be entering the seventh grade this fall. And in order to get her Silver Award, which is a very challenging thing to get in Girl Scouts, she painted our town's gazebo in Fay Park, sanded and primed and painted, and I think you also, something with the power sprayer with the bird poop and all that business. It was an ugly job that this young woman did nearly single-handedly, and I wanted to recognize her and thank her for that hard work that she did for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's also my understanding that you're looking to make a proposal, and I was, I just found out today, Kelly, that in fact, this is in front of the parking rack, is that correct, Keith?
It will be, but.
It will be, okay.
It's starting here.
Okay, all right, so let us know what your thoughts are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So, if you'd like to, oh, yeah, if I was to speak, anything, give us a proposal or tell us what you've done?
For my Girl Scout Silver Award, I chose to paint the Fay Park gazebo to make it look nice for the town's 300th anniversary. The floor and stairs of the gazebo were chipped and peeling, plus there were a lot of bird droppings. The railing also had peeling paint, and there was some graphic graffiti along the banister. Oh, well, it was not a nice representation of our town. I was lucky to have Littleton Lumber donate four cans of paint, my family donated a can, and some supplies, and then I paid for the remaining can of paint and primer. It took 23 hours total to power wash, prime, paint, with the help of my family and friends. The gazebo is now clean and beautiful. This fall, I will be helping the Littleton Country Gardeners add some flowering shrubs and perennials to make it even more beautiful. The reason I am here tonight is to ask that we, as a town, make sure our town icon is kept beautiful. Parks and Recs has had the gazebo painted in the past, but it is very expensive. I've been gathering signatures of volunteers willing to help paint the gazebo in three years. The list will be given to Parks and Rec for them to contact and coordinate painting in the future. The one thing remaining is to find a source for the paint supplies. Using current pricing, cost should be about $347.12. I wish to propose that the town cover the costs for the paint supplies. Thank you for considering my proposal.
Well, thank you, I think that's a very noble proposal, and I think we have a process, not through us at this point, so we can't give you a yes or no, but if you have any other questions, we'll work through it. I think it's going to get done, I don't want to be pushing you off, you look a little disappointed, but I just got to go through the process over the parking rack, but I think, I think the town will be able to find that.
It'll get done.
It'll get done.
It'll get done. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. That's all.
I want you to finish with that.
Yeah.
Just, I had issues with my email this weekend, I don't know, Mac or virus or something, I'm back online, so if anybody sent me an email and didn't get any response, or is expecting a response, just reset it again.
All right, I have one more thing, two, just remembering, looking at you there. I was out at the fire station talking to the fire chief a few weeks ago, and we were walking around on the back, and we went around and saw this nice van that they use, I guess, for the explorers, it was a little bus. And I said, "Oh, you know, what's that bus?" So, he told me all about it, and he actually told me that you facilitated getting that paid and, painted and cleaned up. And, you know, these are the little things that a lot of us do on the side, and this is one I heard about, so I just wanted to give you some recognition and say thank you for taking initiative and getting that done for the.
Yeah, the mechanical work was done at MTI Shirley, and the paint was done at MTI Carkin.
Great, so it's nice just to see the little things that we can do on the side.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to 3A. It was a disclosure determination, we talked about this last week, we had Dina Flockhart come in, and she was appointed to the Littleton Commons sewer feasibility study committee, and she owns a business in one of the buildings that would be affected by this, and she, just like our previous members, has submitted a disclosure for that, and as far as the format tonight. Keith, I assume you reviewed this, and everything's on the, up and up?
Yes, yeah, it is the same format that the board approved for, made it forward, and so we've had a nearly identical situation.
Okay, is, is any discussion?
I do have one quick point I want to make on this, is that, and this has happened a couple of times, not just this disclosure, but it states that the rent might go up. We don't know what, we don't know if the rental will go up, down, or stay the same. We, you know, that's, we have no, you know, way of determining what the end result is going to be yet.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We need to move on.
Move to the board, I'll say.
Yeah.
Okay, move to the board of selectmen, having received and considered the disclosure of Littleton Commerce Sewer, Littleton Commerce Sewer feasibility study committee member, Dina Flockhart, as required by general law, chapter 268A, section 19, vote number one to determine that the financial interest described in Flockhart's disclosure is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services the town may expect from the employee, and number two, to authorize the chairman of the board to sign the quote determination portion of the disclosure.
So, we're gonna? Then move to the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, not aye. Opposed? All right, now we will move on to the appointments that we had scheduled tonight, and the one that we are going to cover tonight, as I stated, is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The Board of Selectmen voted July 22nd, 2013, to establish the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and to assign it to the following, assigned it the following goals adopted for SY 2014, bike lanes, bike access, bike racks at town center, motorcycle moped parking in town center. It's not fully defined, I think with, at the meeting, we just said, a lot of these committees, we let them determine their own destiny and go up with some things, so. I think the way, way to proceed with this is to call each person to speak for themselves, and we can take it one by one and ask more questions as we go along, and then we can make appointments from there.
Mr. Chair, I guess, one question that I have is, are we going to open this up to any, because you have nine applicants, which is a pretty good number, but, you know, board members, selectmen, planning board, maybe the highway department, are there any other members that we should consider when we're sitting and saying, "Okay, there's going to be a 13-person committee, is it going to be a 15-person committee?"
Right, and I, we didn't talk about that, but we do have to talk about the competition as well, so, do we want to do that before or after, and find out who we got?
Then do it before, so.
Okay.
Before, too, yeah, just so we know what we're going to.
All right, one other quick matter of business, we had one application received past the deadline that was received today. I don't have a problem including it, again, my goal is to get as many people involved and not to discourage anybody, and I think the deadline most of the time is to allot, to give people a tell them what it has to, you know, get it in so we can review it in time. But I don't have a problem leaving this ninth applicant here, Dulce Lepoy. Does anybody have a problem, even though it was received past the deadline, of including that?
Is this going to extend till the 9th of September? Because, I mean, at one point we were saying, we have to leave it open, your concern was to leave it open, so that enough people got involved, and now we have so many people involved, that it seems to me you're now talking about, I think you said, paring down the numbers. So, I think we're putting ourselves in a funny position to say, everyone's welcome.
about adding some board, other board members, I think they, that's just my opinion, it's gonna go the way the board wants to go, but if we wanna have a fifteen, nineteen-member committee, that's fine. I think it needs to be pared down a little bit, because to make it more efficiency, that's just my experience. But we, you know, I don't know if we're gonna appoint all nine, but let's, let's talk about maybe, oh, we wanna just cover that on first. I think, I think any application received, if.
I'm good with that, I, I think we should, you know, determine, is it gonna be one of us on the board? Is it gonna be part of the planning board? Is it gonna be part, it's part of our goal, so obviously.
Right. Well, with respect to this Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, it's my understanding that Pamela Campbell, who's the Director of Human and Elder Services, will be the official staff.
She's not on the committee, but she's.
Who will be assigned to do that.
Before we, even if we back up a step, do we have the application for the?
Yes.
Which one?
For the ninth one? It's the last one, that's the type one.
Okay.
Okay, so your concern is we're kinda sending, kinda sending an example here, that if we accept these, then we have to accept anything until the ninth.
Correct.
And if somebody says, oh, I didn't know about that, I didn't get it in, and, you know, they're still accepting, I don't, I don't have a problem. I think we should invite all people, we shouldn't, we shouldn't restrict anybody.
Again, I have an issue with saying we should invite everyone and then pare again.
From not even knowing what's in there qualified, I don't know if we necessarily wanna have a fifteen-person board.
Yes, I've heard you say that.
I think we should first, let's figure out who's gonna be on it. I mean, one of us, is the planning board, does the planning board make sense to be on it? Does, do we reach out to the board of health? Do we reach out to possibly the highway department for Jim to be part of it?
We already have a staff.
The law enforcement, police department, to be a part of it? I know we have a staff person, but, you know, that's, they're not gonna, that individual is not gonna be part of the deliberations or have a say, I mean, it's just a board.
I think with a committee like this, we're gonna take a broad brush approach to looking at this, and then, then they're gonna wanna report back, and I think then, they will report back to each board and committee, 'cause each board and committee's gonna have a different role in this. It might be premature to think that we wanna put our representation on it, because this, this isn't something that's ongoing, this thing's gonna develop, and the scope of it and all that stuff is, you know, can, you know, only limited by our charge. So, I think that we should look at them giving us a preliminary report and also talking at the same time, either all in one meeting or going to separate meetings with, with the people that will be affected, and then see where we go with it.
I think if I can, one of what helps is, along the same lines I had, is that if you form a committee, and we haven't even talked about the size, that committee would be allowed then to go out and do research and talk to the highway department, the police department or whatever, they can do that research, so in my opinion, I don't think we have to add something like that on. I think in this, in this committee, I think we, one of our biggest tasks is to talk about the size and whether we're gonna include the less people in or people in the future, and if I can, I would, I would almost say that we, well, cut it up here, I don't know, I, do we, you don't wanna, do we wanna open, should we just stay with this committee now and talk about the other stuff later on and get this done, or?
Well, I think we need to maintain consistency, so if we let this Dulce LeProy in, then we have to let anybody else who applies between now and September ninth, or until the next meeting, in as well. So basically, the deadline would be extended.
I think, I think deadlines are important. I'm pretty sure if someone wanted to pull papers to run for selective two days after the deadline, or a day after the deadline, Diane Cora would say, I'm sorry, you missed the deadline, you may try again next year.
It's a little different.
Deadlines are meaningful.
Yeah, that's a little different, but this is, that's for.
It's still a deadline.
You're right, but it, that's.
And this has been posted for a month, and the goals were established more than a month ago.
Okay, it's clear that I'm not gonna get a word in here, so what's the board's pleasure?
I think because we have so many applicants and that the deadline takes a different sort of meaning, because, you know, we could end up with five more if we extend the deadline out, and is that, then we're gonna have to go back into that discussion again about, well, how big do we want this committee? So, I agree that the deadline's a pretty important thing here. That doesn't mean we can't reshape this committee later down the road, but I think we should pay attention to the deadline.
Well, the hallway can be resolved, so it's, is a vote, so we can memorialize it, so if anyone wants to make a motion, we can.
So we're not gonna accept?
Well, let's, to make a motion, vote on it, someone make a motion, whether or not we accept applications past the deadline or we don't.
I make a motion that the board of selectmen honor the deadline that they set and honor the fact that there are people, people are plenty to serve on these boards, and we do not need to accept the deadline.
Second, that, welcome.
What you may make in second is to not extend the deadline and accept applications past the deadline. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
So now we have that done.
Yeah, that's fine. So Dulce LeProy? Any ayes? No? All right. All right, so we'll talk about composition, so now we have eight applicants. I know traditionally, I think boards are usually odd numbers in case of a tie, but it doesn't necessarily be helped, and we wanna hear from all eight and.
So we're just gonna, we're gonna appoint the citizens with Pam kind of running the meeting and let it go?
Yeah, I'll just go with what Joe said about it, is I think, you know, we maybe wanna recommend as part of their charge is that they meet with certain departments, they, and, and discuss them, then come back. I think it'd be great to send some people out without, you know, I don't wanna say without experience, but without the influence, some, some people, you know, met around for a while, let them go, figure it out, and, you know, they can always come back for direction and.
And you're not necessarily saying Pam's running the meeting, that this committee might decide, we, we wanna have a chairperson, oh, and, and use the resources of Pam to go forward. And we were talking about getting different people involved, and I've read through the, what everyone has to say, whether they wanna be on the board. I wonder, in the case of this committee here, although we do wanna hear from people if they're here, but in a case like this, on this type of committee, do we just take the stand, let's get as many voices out there as possible and appoint all of them to put an application in?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think eight's too big, I've been on larger committees. I think, I think nine eleven is probably a limit, but, you know, if we have eight people willing to do this, and so they can spread the work, they can hopefully be a little more, get a little more reach and more input, I don't talk about eight.
We, we might wanna consider the fact that applicant Paolo Loriero is also on application for the housing committee, so we could appoint him to one of them, and then there would be an odd number on the housing committee with the seven applicants that were on time, and that would make odd also on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I don't know if he's here.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, we're considering bicycling tonight, bicycling pedestrian tonight, right? Is, is Paolo here? Paolo Loriero? Loriero?
You know, what to, when we formed the voter participation committee, we had a larger committee to start with, and that sort of, you, and it was very important to have that large committee, because we really didn't have anything specific that we were working on. We had to bring the ideas in, we invited people in, just to gather ideas on, on how to improve voter participation. It was all help reach in the beginning, and as the group began to work along, you know, some members, you know, the numbers went down, sort of naturally went down, because it was sort of a different role, and now, now we're refining some things that were done, trying to modify them, stuff like that. So I think if we, starting off with a large number isn't necessarily a problem, I think by, it'll naturally come down as you get through the fact-finding stage and the, and idea gathering and taking input to the ones that are gonna really wanna sit down and, and work their way through this over the long term.
I think if, if anybody's here tonight, let's hear it for them.
I'm okay with the point.
I'm late, too.
Yeah.
I mean, more than every in my eyes makes, makes for a better committee so that folks can divide and conquer.
Yeah. Okay. I won't go down the list, I already swept out twice, so there's eight applicants here, I'll just go down, I'll read them all, so if anyone's here and they wanna speak, they can stand, recognize himself and speak. We have James Patrick Tabor, Ina Landsman, John Isaac, Nicholas Bates House.
Here.
Anne Grace, Rob Horn, Paula Loriero, Loriero, Joanne Derry. So if anybody would like to speak on this committee, give us any ideas or your background, please stand up and identify yourself.
I'd be glad to. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm a Littleton resident, bicycling is my primary means of getting around town. I biked down to the train station all summer, all winter, that's my way to get to and from work, I biked here this evening. Littleton does not have great facilities for people like me, and I would love the opportunity to participate on the committee to make those facilities better.
Okay. Great.
Thanks, Derek.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm John Isaac, I live online, I'm a showbiz reporter in Littleton for years. I, as well, bike a lot, I bike to and from work as much as possible, sometimes I commute as longer, sometimes I drive part of it. I've got two daughters, one thirteen, one three, we bike together, I'd like to give them a safe biking environment, and also, you know, we try and bike into town to run errands and stuff like that, so. I also organize the kids' ride, the kids' BMC ride at Littleton, I also participate in a bunch of the charity rides in the state as well, so.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Ina Landsman, I'm also a Littleton resident. I'm sorry?
Oh, okay.
On, on Warren Street. I actually don't bicycle, other than with my four-year-old who likes to tricycle, but I do walk quite a bit, and I, I'm, you know, I'm really excited about exploring different ways to make also more pedestrian-friendly, more bicycle-friendly, while keeping the same character of Littleton, the reason why we all moved here. I think there are a lot of things that can be done to make that happen at really little or no cost, so I, I'm really excited about exploring the options, as well as getting input from a lot of other people as to what they think can be done to improve the situation.
Just one question, you mentioned you lived in many multiple, in many walkable, bicycle communities, can you tell us a couple of those, just so we have an, an idea of your perspective?
Well, I'm a little scared to say it, 'cause I don't want people to think that I wanna turn Littleton into places where I've lived, but I, I mean, I've lived in New York City, and New Haven, in Boston, Arlington, so places where people take walking for granted.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't have any delusions that Littleton's gonna be like that.
Hold on, wait, let's hope not, right?
Absolutely, and if that's where I want to be, I would've bought a house there rather than here, but I've also seen a lot of bad intersections, where I went to school, for example, there was someone who got killed almost every year crossing the street, 'cause it was just so badly designed, so I think I would bring that perspective and, and think about what would make sense and what wouldn't.
All right, great.
Thank you, Dina. Thank you.
Let's call. Anybody? All right. So my only thoughts, and then everybody else can chime in, is that we give some sort of charge and some sort of time to report back, whether we want it to be six months, I don't think six months is enough, I think it should be eight to twelve months to report back, and then I would just add in somehow in the motion or in the formation, is to make a recommendation that they meet with and hear from planning, fire, police, things like that. And that.
So we're gonna add on to this charge, the verbiage you just said?
Yeah, yeah, if you, if anyone thinks it's appropriate, we can have a motion to amend the charge and then to, 'cause I, I mean, I think we at least have some time that they report back.
Yeah. I, I think it's fair to use the language, including but not limited to, with respect to the goals that we came up with, and also to work within the parameters of the grant that Pamela Campbell, I'm, I'm sure there are some guidelines that the grant has spelled out as well.
Okay. Sounds good, can you read it?
Sure. Okay, so move at the board's selectmen, vote number one to appoint the following numbers to indefinite terms on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, James Patrick Tabor, Ina Landsman, Jonathan Isaac, Nicholas Bates House, Anne Grace, Rob Horn, Paolo Loriero, and Joanne Derry. And number two, to establish the membership of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee at eight members, and number three, to invite each committee to present a recommended, oh, should we do that? Or, okay, how about, and number three, to charge the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee with following through on the goals of installing bike lanes, bike access, bike racks at town center, motorcycle and moped parking in town center, and additional goals, which may be defined by the parameters of the grant that Pamela Campbell secured with respect to increasing bicycling and walking within the town of Littleton.
And, and to report back?
And to report back, would you wanna say by March?
Sure.
And to report back to, to our committee by March, 2014, with some suggested.
Oh, with an update. Okay. And to report back.
Let's give them February, just in case anything we were working on requires town meeting, warrant action.
Okay, February. Your time is limited, you have six months.
Well, again, that's just to report back, if there's other work to be done, yeah.
Can they report back what, what they want, what they need from schedule, once they start to.
We may be.
To get them out from.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
Clear a second, say again? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. I'm sorry, my glasses, I, is it Horn or Hoare?
No, it's Hoare, and that's Nicholas Bates House, right there. Rob Horn is not here.
Okay.
It's H O R N E.
Oh, okay. I thought you, I thought, yeah.
No, it's H O, well, it's just called Hoare, it's Hoare, H O R N E.
I was probably going through them and then I was delayed on the response, so, okay, thank you. All right, well, that's good.
Great.
Good luck.
Good.
Yep. All right, so right now, we have Doug Halli from the Town of Acton, who's gonna talk about the inter- the municipal agreement and the Across Town Connect Transportation Management Association. Keith, would you like to open?
Sure, and I'll say to Doug that I've made the executive decision to pull the plug on, we have the PowerPoint presentation slides as the guide.
Okay.
For the board, and we can walk, you know, certainly walk us through that stuff, but I just wanna make sure we got you in and out in one sitting, and I, I wanna say that it's really been a pleasure working with Doug the last, I don't know, two years at least, on this joint transportation project. Doug is the Director of Public Health for the, for the town of Acton, that's his day job, but he is also a volunteer, I heard, to coordinate the transportation project that first five towns and now seven towns are working on, and, and so our next step, we've had two rounds of state grant funding to get us this far, our next step is to have the seven towns actually enter into an agreement, an operating agreement of sorts, to get going with the Transportation Management Association, which would also be a public-private partnership with, with many businesses, and in Littleton, that includes IBM, Sam Park and Company, and private technologies and others. So Doug's here to update us on where we are with the, with the I M A for the T M A.
I may interrupt you now, because I didn't have to interrupt at eight o'clock, we do have a public hearing to open at eight, we have to at least open it, so if you're not completely all happy to interrupt, we may let it table, whatever, but just, just know that I'm.
Thank you. I'm used to the procedures. First of all, thank you for allowing me to come here tonight to talk about this, some important initiative, and I also want to thank Keith for all the work that he has done. Without the advocates in each individual community supporting this project, we wouldn't have gotten as far as we have. To give you just a little bit of an overview, the reason why I have been involved in this as the Public Health Director is because about three years ago, the Town of Acton did a, a survey of all its residents in regards to what they thought the key issue, health a survey of all its residents in regards to what they thought the key issue, health issue, that they would have to address in the coming years. And transportation came up as one of the major initiatives that the town was looking for. So based on that survey, I volunteered to be part of a project. And I was very fortunate that in Acton, we had an advocate in Pranny Osman that I worked closely with to get our first initial grant. And that grant was built upon the efforts of six or seven communities in this area that had been meeting about transportation for several years now. So in a certain sense, I'm a late comer to this whole issue, but I have been trying my best to catch up where everybody's at. So about a year ago, we got a grant from the Community Innovative Challenge Program that is set up by the state. It was a $185,000 grant that allowed us to take a look at regionalizing transportation issues within five communities. Those five communities were Acton, Boxborough, Littleton, Maynard, and Stowe. There are many challenges within that grant. We have submitted the final report this year. We have looking at a Transportation Management Association. And some of the issues we've been trying to deal with recently is branding that TMA, you know, finding what the proper name is, what the logo should be, and then implementation of the budget. The challenges that we have been recently looking at is that our idea is working very well. We're having more interest and stakeholders wanting to be involved in this. And because of that, early this year, we submitted for the second round of Community Innovative Challenge Grant, and we were able to get another $60,000 to basically start the TMA and also reach out to other entities that were interested in this project. Those expanded people were Concord and Westford, Cisco Fever, Guterres Company, IBM, Sam Park Company. And I might have forgot to mention that Clock Tower Place was in the initial grant. One of the challenges that we are looking at is the new model needs to fit a legal standard. Having a public-private partnership is not the simplest thing in Massachusetts, so we have to look very carefully at how we create those relationships and protect the communities as they enter into them. And part of that is the development of an intermunicipal agreement that would handle that. Another challenge that we have is the dispatch technology. We believe that the current transportation system that most communities have, which is initially just a COA van, has to have a very robust type of technology so that we can make sure that the dispatcher, the driver, the COA are all interconnected and understand what's happening at any given moment, and be able to provide that service as quickly and effectively as possible. So a lot of what we're going to be developing is that sharing of data between the dispatcher, the driver, and the COA. Another major challenge that we have is that, or you might look at it as an opportunity, we have three communities that are in one RTA, MART, three communities that are in another RTA, LRTA, and then the seventh community, Concord, is just part of MBTA. Trying to create a transportation system that goes across RTA is not something that has been done, and so we're really breaking the ground on that. But we feel that as time goes on, there's going to be more and more pressure for those RTAs to actually create this type of service, because people don't stop at lines. People go to places. The fact that Emerson Hospital is in the MBTA zone doesn't stop the people in the MART zone to not go to Emerson, or the people in the LRTA zone to go to Emerson. So we feel that this has to look at that whole big issue. In the final report of the grant that we submitted, we looked at what our goals would be for the TMA. So we were looking at basically four types of transportation that we want to address, some very much at the beginning, some that we'll be working on going forward. So we want to look at the daily needs of the trips for area residents, for the shopping and medical appointments. We want to look at the traditional commuting from the service area that we're providing into the immediate Boston area. We want to look at the suburb-to-suburb commuting for the everyday traveler. And we want to look at the reverse commuting from the immediate Boston area to this service area. We think this is going to be the growth coming forward in the future with the expanded train lines. There's going to be a greater ability for people living in Boston coming out here to work. I know my children, a different generation, they think living in the city is a good thing to do. They want to come out to this area to find jobs, and we have to find that way to provide that for them. The transition to the TMA, we looked at several different models of which we could do this. And one was an intermunicipal agreement. We also looked at 501(c)(4) opportunities that we could establish. We could go to the legislators to create new legislation to cover this type of entity. And we also looked at the possibility of joining an existing TMA. Ultimately, we thought that in order to keep this project online and keep it going, that the best thing to do was to basically create an intermunicipal agreement that's on steroids, which are legal in this case. The agreement would specify mechanisms for the private support matched to public services. We would select a lead community, and at this point in time, Acton is serving as that lead community. The transition, you know, TMA would also start targeting some legislation changes which would allow us to evolve over time and be able to create a better partnership. And also, in order to address potential liabilities and conflict of interest as we develop this whole project. One of the things that we've been doing this year was thinking about how to brand the TMA, what should the brand name be? And as one of, we wanted to find a name that sort of connected us to the area, but we couldn't really come to an agreement of how people identified this area. For instance, Acton has been running what we call the Minute Van, and we thought that's sort of what's cute and connected to the area, but a lot of people felt it was a little too cute, and that it, people look at it and think Minute Man all the time and not really think about a transportation service. So as we looked at that, we finally come up with something that really expressed what the service would be doing, and that's Cross-Town Connect. And we had a consensus choice on utilizing that name. We then, we asked our consultant to provide several different taglines, and they weren't warm and fuzzy the way that we like taglines to be. But we had a partner, Jessica Strunklin from the 495 TMA. She came up with an idea to use the words "your community, your transportation, your way." We felt she concisely said exactly what we were trying to do, and so that really has reached consensus agreement. We also had the consultant look at different logos that, they weren't real warm and fuzzy either. And so we've done a little bit better work, and on your presentation, you'll see the bottom logo is probably where we're heading now. That really is what people think more represents what we're doing, and we just got to modify that a little bit more.
Five-minute warning.
Well, one of the aspects is we want to make sure that businesses were shown in that graphic, because we are representing businesses as well as everybody else. So what will the next steps be? Well, we've got three grants now that we're implementing for the TMA. Besides the Community Innovative Challenge Grant of $60,000, we are also successful in getting a $16,000 grant for a mobility manager. A mobility manager is really someone who is interacting with the private businesses, looking at what their needs are, and talking to them about guaranteed ride home programs, and trying to get more sharing of rides coming into their places. We also got a dispatch services grant, which is going to allow us to utilize that money to dispatch all the COA vans that are within the region from a central service. That service will be for an eight-hour day, where most of the COAs are only dispatching for a couple of hours per day. The cost of doing that for, if we end up with seven communities, is going to be severely reduced to your current cost. So not only are you going to get more time, but it's going to be a lot cheaper for you. The Community Innovative Challenge Grant Two has four problems. We have to, we want to identify and seek additional public partners, and we've got Concord and Westford already committed. We've got, want to identify additional private partners, and we've got several of those that we're talking to right now. We've talked to IBM. They're interested in having a guaranteed ride home program, so I think in the beginning of September, we'll be meeting with them to develop that program. We've also made an agreement with Clock Tower Place. As part of them getting services, they have agreed to give us office space at Clock Tower Place for no charge. And so that's going to help us a great deal. We're advancing the dispatching technology. We have found a vendor that, Mobilitat, that has a program which can allow us to dispatch each van independently and be able to schedule everything so that there are no conflicts. And then the grant will assist us in implementing the first six months of the TMA. We have already signed a contract with ANF. We have an RFP, Advertized Transaction Associates. We're currently analyzing our new partners, Concord and Westford. The dispatch technology was implemented on August 1st, and we've got the six months at half-budget covered for that grant. The mobility manager will be looking at public and private transportation services, inventorying all of the services that are currently being provided in the area, developing a database for those services so we can have a better understanding of what's happening, and then doing outreach and providing information to local businesses and to the municipalities about different mechanisms in which rides can be shared.
Doug, are there other towns that you've, that you're meeting with during this period of time?
There is. The one other town in this area that has been interested is Carlisle, and I've met with their Board of Selectmen and explained the whole program, and they are interested, but I'm not sure they're going to make a decision in the immediate...
So we've got the seven, at least, that we're going forward with, and what we're looking to do is to get a vote out of each of those participants through the Boards of Selectmen within the municipal agreement to give us that framework that we can carry on. Right now, Town of Acton is carrying it as the lead community. The IMA, the intermunicipal agreement allows us all to weigh in there. So, and it's one of your goals for this year to do this, so happy that Doug could come here and brief us on that.
How much time you need?
Well, let me just sum up, because let's get to the point where the Board of Selectmen would be very interested in, and that's in regards to, we have developed a budget of $166,000 to handle us for this year. More than 50% of that is being paid for by grants. In order to support that budget, we have to develop revenues. And part of the revenue base is looking at each community providing funds towards this service, and that would be related to the hours of service that you're currently giving for your COA, and the ridership that you're currently giving to your, from your COA. So for instance, in Littleton's case, I believe that you're what we call a 10 to 20 hours a day service. That would be a $4,000. And the ridership category, you're in the, again, about the 250, 500. So what we are looking for, a commitment from Littleton, would be $4,500 for this next, for this fiscal year.
And we can also access our MBTA funds for that purpose. That's been one of the strategies as we've been approaching transportation here, that there's money that we get that we can use for transportation. And it's, you know, what's great about this whole process is we have, Littleton has a transportation problem we need to solve, and that we have commuter rail station with no shuttle service. We have the need to connect our employers with their employees, and that we've got the structure in place that we get to solve it with our surrounding towns and with our neighboring businesses. So we're, so it's, we'll wholeheartedly support this approach.
Let me open up this hearing, and then we'll talk for a minute, but this is a very important matter. So let me, with the time being eight o'clock, the Board of Selectmen's Board pursuant to Chapter 138 of the General Laws and the Selectmen's License Release will hold a public hearing Monday, August 19, 2013, at 8:00 p.m. in Room 103 of the town offices in the Shattuck Street Building, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass., to review all alcohol pouring license dated December 17, 2012, to Carin Foods, Inc., Gregory P. Eller's manager for the Littleton Sub Shop property, Pablo de Comment, located at 486 King Street, Littleton, Mass., to determine if on July 12 and July 26, 2013, alcoholic beverages were sold to intoxicated persons in violation of Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 69, and to consider at such hearing whether such license shall be modified, suspended, canceled, or revoked or declared forfeit. So do we want to table this for a minute and let Mr. Halli finish up, or do we want to...
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, to suspend the hearing until another 10 minutes?
Okay.
Just a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I would be happy to answer any questions, anything that you want to learn more about this project.
I have one question, Mr. Chair. The COA, local COAs have work-off programs. Well, how is this going to impact some of those folks that are working for work off at property taxes?
So you use your senior citizens to provide what service? Dispatching or...
There are some office functions that...
It shouldn't impact that unless they're actually doing some dispatching for you, then obviously without dispatcher, they won't need to do that. But otherwise, your COA is, the service is going to stay the same, it's just the dispatch component will be provided by Cross-Town Connect.
And, I mean, the benefit, and it's interesting that you mentioned what the experience is in Acton, looking at transportation as one of the top goals, that our own COA person, the Director of Elder and Human Services, who's brought to us this idea of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee that you established tonight, or filled tonight, as part of a wellness effort, that it's, that the issues there for the elderly population in town, as well as others, is transportation and the ability to get around on something by means other than, you know, an automobile. So having alternatives available through mass transit, you know, whatever shuttles we come up with, there's really some, the technology is amazing to see what you can do to better coordinate with, you know, instead of all of us sending one, you know, a van down with one person on it to medical appointments, the fact that we could coordinate and have more people on it, we're going to be getting a lot more for service out of that.
And you're recently from committee, Concord, Carlisle, and Acton did a study last year about walkability and bikability within those three communities that we would be happy to share with your new committee.
Thanks. I think this is a great effort. Applaud.
What are the seven communities?
The seven communities in total are Acton, Boxborough, Littleton, Maynard, Stowe, Westford...
Concord.
Concord. Thank you. And then...
We actually add, we didn't have Concord and Westford in initially, but when we did the study, when we put GPS devices on all the COA vans and then tracked where they were all going, that they were going, Westford, Concord. And so we, so we said to ourselves, we need to include those communities in the solution, because that's where, that's where the high traffic is.
Correct.
And then there's a proposal to add Carlisle.
And again, I've talked to Carlisle, they're interested, but I don't think they'll be making a decision this year.
Okay. All right. And then who else were we, was another town?
Excuse me?
There was another town other than Carlisle?
Nope, not a town other than Carlisle. And one of the aspects, we don't want to make this too big, and we want to make sure it's where our people are going to.
Because your efficiencies could diminish if it gets too big. So what happens if we determine these communities are too big, and does anybody get kicked out if they're bringing down the, you know, the efficiency or anything?
Hopefully not.
Right, right. Yeah. So if you're in, you're in.
Yeah.
And hopefully...
And they're sort of a basic, I mean, we, I know Littleton came into a sort of thinking, and not to the exclusion of Acton, who we love, but that we were thinking of between Boxborough and Littleton and Westford is where our, a lot of the orbit was for many of the economic development things that we were doing, that there are employers in those three towns who have regulatory agreements from the state. That there are employers in those three towns who have regulatory agreements from the state which say, look at alternative means of transportation. They're all some big employers who are already spending a lot of money to, to, to send shuttles down to Alewife to pick up their employees and bring them up here. So part of the grand strategy, once we get the enhanced service for commuter rail with the reverse commute arriving here earlier in the morning, would be to, would be instead of, would be to have those businesses put their money in helping to subsidize a local shuttle service so that they only have to get between here and the commuter rail station rather than Alewife. So it's a long-term plan.
All right. So we'll need a motion to, to authorize execution of the intermunicipal agreement. Do we need to, what do we need to about the $4,500? We need to make a recommendation at town meeting to add that into the budget somewhere?
We're, I can get back to you on that, but we don't need to appropriate the MBTA funds, but...
Are there excess, excess funds that we can?
The, the MBTA funds are available for use without appropriation.
Okay.
And if it's not so banial, correct me.
She's not jumping up, so I assume we're right now. Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
You're ready?
Both of the Boards of Selectmen wrote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Subsection 4, where it authorizes execution of the intermunicipal agreement, IMA, with the towns of Acton, Boxborough, Concord, Maynard, Stowe, and Westford, for the provision of transportation management services and the establishment of the Transportation Management Association, TMA, subject to the approval as to form by Town Council. Tucker?
Motion remains seconded to approve the intermunicipal agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Conposed. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Good to see you. Go down. No problem at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love the idea, just trying to work on this. That's how manager told me that Doug has volunteered for it. I got more.
That's, when you're obsessive compulsive sometimes. What's your, what's your next deliverable going to be, do you think, that you would be able to get?
I would, I would hope that sometime after October, when we are looking at the dispatch services to start, that I can come back and give you an update.
Okay. Great. Thanks. All right. I'd like to reopen the, the public hearing for the liquor license violation. I'll just...
Do you have a press?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not touching, I'm not, I'm going to turn this right over to the chief, or if he's testing me.
Thank you very much. If you'd entertain Detective Sergeant Jeff Patterson, one of your alcoholic attorneys here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I requested this hearing in reference to Pub on Common, two possible violations for serving intoxicated person on two di, two different occasions. I forward you some information in reference to the two incidents. If you'd like, I'd go through what we have right here or...
Whatever you feel is necessary.
On July 12, 2013, at 7:30 PM, Officer Cory was in the common and his attention was on the, in full uniform on the motorcycle. His attention was drawn to the Pub on the Common due to two males on the sidewalk. One of the males appeared to be intoxicated to Officer Cory. Officer Cory discovered the male party was at the pub with a group of friends and they were trying to assist him in leaving. Officer Brooks and Sergeant Pinnard arrived on scene to assist as well. The male observed, the male was observed to be very unsteady on his feet, reeked of an alcoholic beverage, and had visibly urinated himself. And he was unable to speak at the time on the, on the sidewalk. His friends were able to assist him in leaving the pub, but as they crossed the street to the common, he fell to the ground and refused to get back up. His friends advised the officers that they needed to wait for a ride as they did not have a car at the time. After confirming that the male was intoxicated, as defined by statute, he was placed in protective custody and transported to the police station for his safety, as remaining on the common was not an option. While in custody, he urinated again in his pants and again on the floor in the booking room. His breathing was observed to be labored after he fell asleep in the cell, which resulted in the Littleton Fire Department responding with the ambulance and transporting him to Neshova Hospital. This obviously tied up our whole evening shift, as well as the fire department, for a considerable amount of time. Officer Cory then spoke with the owner, Greg Ellers, and was advised that there were eight males in the group and they had six pitchers of Blue Moon Beer, which equates to about 28 12-ounce cans, and six shots of Patron Tequila, 80 proof, which also equates to about one 12-ounce beer each shot, at a total of 34 drinks in a two-and-a-half-hour period of time. Mr. Ellers had said that they were in the process of getting the gentleman to leave when the officers arrived for that incident. Then again, on July 26, at 11:30, Officer Casey was on patrol in fully marked cruiser and in full uniform, traveling on King Street approaching Great Road. His attention was drawn to the parking lot of the Verizon store because of a male party in a fluorescent yellow shirt, which he noted to be urinating on the side of the, on the side of his car facing King Street traffic. Officer Casey approached the male and identified himself. The male first claimed he was just lighting a cigarette and denied anything further. After Officer Casey advised he, he saw him urinating in public, the male admitted to doing so. His speech was slurred, he was unable to stand up without swaying, and he had a strong odor of alcoholic beverage on his person. He advised Officer Casey that he had three drinks at the Pub on the Common. Officer Casey then advised him that he appeared to be more than, he appeared to have had more than three drinks, and the, the person admitted to drinking prior to going to the Pub on the Common. The male was allowed to leave with a sober friend that was driving. Sergeant O'Donoghue and Officer Casey made contact with the, the Pub staff. They spoke first with bartender Christina Mohammed and was advised, and advised her of the incident. Her response was argumentative and uncooperative, stating she could prove that he was not drunk by his receipts. She was informed by the officers that he drank prior coming to the Pub and probably should not have been served due to his intoxication when he entered. The incident was also explained to the sub-shop manager, James Hopkins, who was there at the time, and he was very cooperative and apologetic. On July 31, myself and Detective King met with the owner, Greg Ellers, at the police station in reference to two incidents, went over the incidents with him, discussed what he has done, and found him to be very cooperative and very attentive to the matters at hand. So we just felt that it was very important to bring these incidents to the board as the licensing authority for the, the alcohol to their attention.
Do you have, forward of us here from, from the licensee first?
On the Friday that the group of people came in, now on Fridays, and there's no excuses. I'm here basically in long work with the police department. We've been there for nine months now, and this is the first two issues we've had. We don't let people come in. I consider us a restaurant. From day one, when I got the license, I said, I don't want to be a bar. I just want to be a restaurant that offers alcohol. We've tried it, and it's worked out real well so far. Every time we have an issue, we solve the issue. But what happened this day was there was all those guys in the front of the store, they were getting pitchers, and one guy was sitting in the corner, and my bartenders were serving him, we were watching, and everything was fine, until one guy, obviously was speed drinking on the pitchers, he got up. And as soon as he got up, what we saw, he couldn't even walk. I went over, we pulled all the alcohol, we closed the tab, and we said to the guys, we said, you guys need to get him out of here. You're all shut off. You know, could we have done better? It's kind of hard because we're trained that you keep an eye on people, but when one guy's just sitting in the corner and he's, you know, just not doing anything, and the first notice we saw him was get up, that was it. Once we knew that, then we immediately shut everything off. He was on his way out, I closed him down, the other guys with him were fine, they were taking him home. As far as what happened outside, he obviously had too much to drink. And, you know, I have to be held responsible because it's my license.
Okay. I'll let you finish up. Go ahead.
And, and on the other issue was the same thing. It was about 10:15 at night, and I was working in the room with James, my manager back there. We got a note for about a hundred dollars worth of food, and we were making all the food. All I saw of those people was they went out to the table, and I said hi to everybody, and I said, you know, how's it going? Great. And after I made the food, I had gone home for the evening because it was 11 o'clock, and 14 hours is enough for me. But I let, let James answer that question because he was there when they closed the store. I wasn't part of the, Detective Patterson, I wasn't there for that finishing touch.
Okay.
But if there are any other questions, they'd gladly like to answer.
I think my question, one that I have, do you concur, is there any evidence Detective Patterson, alcohol, what he said, where he, they were shut down at their first notice? Did you have any concurrence at the scene or any time since that?
From my understanding from the officers, that that's what was explained, and actually the contact, first contact with the officers was outside, they were taking them outside of the bar, so...
So there's evidence that he was acting prudently?
That, that's correct.
But he, for unfortunate reasons, he may have been just a little, he might, may have been too late.
Correct.
And there's no distinction, is there any distinction of serving, you know, one person keeps coming up who's sober, comes up to the bar, gets sober, and goes back, you know, and one person drinks and all this? I mean, there's no distinction between, I mean, technically, you're still serving somebody who's serving, who's maybe giving it to somebody else.
That's correct. You're responsible for being able to observe, number one, the number of people drinking off the pitcher beer, and also the people that are drinking as to their state.
Okay. All right. Any other board members have anything, any questions?
I do. You said, you asked the rhetorical question, could we have done better, which you did not answer?
You can all...
What could you do to do, to have done better?
Yeah, eyeball. There's more people there, you just have to keep walking around, keeping your eyes on everybody. You just have to watch everybody.
Who's responsible for that?
I'm responsible for everything. I'm the owner, so it comes down to me. If I'm not there, it comes down to my manager.
Okay. You also said, I have to be held responsible because it's my license. How would you suggest we hold you responsible?
On the first, very first time this has happened, I would probably expect a warning would be sufficient. I've already discussed with Mr. Patterson, with Detective Patterson, any help he can give me, any other ideas, if there are any different ways of going about things. I'm here to learn. I've only been there for nine months on this. The pizza business, I know well. Been doing that for 20 years. This is all moving me. I'm trying to get something back. I'm trying to, I want to take something that's there and open it, and I think it's worked out well. These are two bumps that I've got to learn. So it's a learning process. I don't know everything.
Are Judy Gagden, Tony, Toby, and Christina Mohammed still employed by you?
Yes, they are.
Do you?
I've had a discussion with them, sat them all down. Would I all be more training? I said, I have had, she hasn't been able to do it. She's gone, Christina Mohammed's gone to the police station twice to try to see Detective Patterson, made it to court both times. So, but I told her she needs to go. She has any questions, because she's one of my bar managers, she should ask him, because that's his job, he knows more. If he, any help they can give us, I'll, this is, like I said in the beginning, I want this to be a team effort. I want to learn, I want to be able to do the right thing. I'm not here to let people come in my place, get totally drunk, and then have problems. I wouldn't even open it if that was the case.
Is the Littleton Police Department charged with the training of your employees?
Nope.
Who is then?
TIP certification. Everybody's taken a TIP certification class before they're hired by.
Okay. So they've taken those certification classes?
Everybody's taken a class, yeah. Watched the videos and taken a class.
Mr. Ellers did supply me with a complete list of his servers and their dates that they expire for the TIP certification, and they all have taken the class.
Thank you.
Yeah, Charlie?
Can I ask what the recommendation be, before I ask questions, what recommendation the police department would be at this point?
After speaking with the Deputy Chief and Chief Kelly in reference to this, we are recognizing this as basically a first offense. I know there are two incidences. We would like to treat it as one. They did happen relatively close together. It's, it's my recommendation that the board take a look at the training that they have had, which I did bring the, the list that, that he's provided, that the IRL TIP certified. A couple of them are coming up to expire within the next year, maybe a year and a half. And I think there were two, two of them that were involved in one of the incidents. Maybe they should take their recertification a little early, would be my recommendation to those two. But I would like to see this treated as, as a one incident, as a, from one incident, you have, it's up to the board and the licensing authority to decide, but you have anywhere from like a warning to six days suspension range that you, that you'd be looking at. But I would like to see this treated as, as a warning for the first offense, and I'm satisfied that he has spoken with his employees in reference to the, how the officers were met on the one incident, you know, with the, with the attitude and, and stuff, and I believe that's going to be corrected. And I'm very confident that he's looking to cooperate with that department, so...
Are you satisfied that with, how Mr. Ellers has approached this, this problem?
I, I'm very satisfied at how he has approached this problem, yes.
Would you explain? I have a number of questions. First to Detective Sergeant Patterson, were any of the people involved, charged with anything?
No, they weren't. The first one was taken into protective custody for his safety due to his intoxication level, and the second one was allowed to leave with a sober driver.
You, to the owner, first off, let me say, I'm 100% in favor of you succeeding in business here. This is obviously not the kind of thing that's going to...
Yeah.
So I would like to ask you, what, what was the training, what specifically in your training is the guideline for how this type of situation is handled? You talked, let me back up a step so that, so that we don't get too far off track here. But you talked about you identified the drinker and you shut them off. So will you talk to me a little bit about the process of identifying somebody and the process that happens when you have identified somebody that's had too much?
So the process of identifying is basically starting when somebody comes in, and judged by how they're acting, and you have a little conversation with them to see how they're going. And that's you do the same thing also when they come in and they've had nothing to drink. It's like we're talking to you now. And after two drinks or so, you see them changing, that's when you offer them, you slow, you slow down, stop the beer, they only get you something to eat, they offer them water, you know, that type of stuff. If they get confrontational with you, you just say, okay, you shut them off, and that's that. So but the hard part is, is when, when a group of people like that, when they're all there, is you go over and drop off the pitchers, and all the guys are talking, they're all regular, but you didn't pay attention to the one guy that's just sitting in the corner doing nothing. Problem is, they don't really speak English. Only three or four of them spoke English because I believe they were Spanish. So that's the hard part. But like I said, if we're to do a better job of just watching everybody, I, I can't claim, you know, like, oh, it's not my fault because it's my business. Everything's my fault. Anybody that owns it, I could be in Disney World, it's my fault, I'm not there. But that's part of it. But you just have to keep an eye on it.
Is there a point in that training where they want police intervention? Are...
The only time it says police intervention in the training is when you get to the, if it gets confrontational, and they say, you know, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that, then we just call the police. And thankfully, we haven't had to do that.
So essentially, once they exit the building, what you've been trying to do ends?
Pretty much, once they've left.
So your, your job had, was to get them, to shut them off and get them...
My job is, what I do is if I think there's somebody, I have to find them to ride home, you know, take their keys. But like I said, I, I had him ride home, the first guy. He was all set, you know, he was going with them, we'd already shut everybody off and escorted him out the door. And I made sure that he had people that were taking him home, and that's when Officer Cory drove around the corner, and that's what happened.
Okay. You used the term spoken with the employees.
Yes.
Specifically, what remedial actions did you take?
We sat down Mr. Hopkins, I, and all the bartenders, and we just simply said that we have to really keep an eye on, you're serving pitchers, you know, one guy doesn't come up and get a pitcher, there's a group of people. We have to keep an eye on the groups of people drinking. I said, I want the shots, you know, limited. I don't even want, I don't even want to sell them. If somebody wants a shot, it's fine. If somebody wants a shot, it's fine, you've got to keep it at one. You can't let people sit there and have a shot and have a shot and have a shot, can't do that. You know, because there's always so much alcohol they're allowed to have. It's basically, you have to talk to the people more, even, like I said, even if they don't speak English, you have to look at them really face to face and tell whether someone, you know, is on the English, look in their eyes, take a good look at them. We discussed all that and basically, since it's happened, you know, we've set minimums where you can only have, people can only have, you know, two drinks in the course of an hour. And if they've had movement, if they're going for more, you've got to stop it. You know, I have to really, it's not worth me selling an extra drink and risking everything, it's just not worth it, you know, so.
And what, is there, if they fail to comply with that, has it made clear what the policy is?
They'll be terminated. It's all the rules I gave them, they have to follow the rules or?
But that's all I have at this point.
Charlie, you started.
So, you said that you've now instituted a policy with your bartenders that no more than two drinks an hour.
Right.
Are you also going to make it a policy of your business that shots are limited to one? Because you just said that that's what you'd like to see.
I would like to see that, I have to, because we don't sell a lot of shots, I'm just saying, but if it happens, I don't want people, you know, just coming in and having to shut the shop. It's like, not to recoup it, but when we first opened, there were people that were coming in and we'd be shutting them off and I'd be like, well, why are we getting shut off, we've just come here. And I said, well, you've had three beers, you haven't gotten any food, you're sitting there. And then they'd be like, well, we're not coming back. And my reply was, that's okay.
Yeah.
It's okay, I just, I really don't want that. Anybody that knows me knows that's not what I want to deal with.
Would you consider as a policy of your business, at least for short term, not to sell pitchers?
I can't say that because you can have like four guys come in and want to get a pitcher and it's cheaper to buy the pitcher and then help, you know, I can't say I won't sell pitchers, you know. Keep an eye on them, absolutely. You have to monitor them because I don't want to see one guy drinking a whole pitcher of beer while the other guys eating his appetizer, talking to a friend. You know, but definitely, I'm not going to say I won't sell them, but we have to monitor them.
You answered the TIPS question that I had, but Detective, when we initiated your officers and you being the lead, there was some AVCC violations. How was Greg in regards to his participation with you, first, your first go out and go around?
Actually, they weren't up and running when we first got initiated. So, we haven't done some compliance checks since he's been up and running as of yet. But they are, they are coming.
So Greg, it's good to hear that, you know, you took some proactive steps to rectify the situation and, you know, as the board has said, we don't, you know, we want more participation in business in downtown, so I think you've done a good job down there and, you know, Littleton Sub has been around for a long time, so.
About forty years.
One thing you said is that, he says you wanted to be a team approach between you and the police department. Well, I see it a little differently. I see, you're the team, you and your employees are the team. They are the umpires, the referees, okay? You can obviously solicit their advice, but you're the team. So, I want to see a lot more of what I'm hearing here tonight about your responsibility and about training. And as far as, you've all taken the tips, is there something else after that? Another tips, training, tips part two or anything else? Anybody else who gives any other type of training?
There's recertification and that, I could look into if there's any other companies that would do, would do more. But like I said, they all have taken it fairly recent and there's only the two employees, one's expiring almost a year from now and the next one's actually two years, so, are the more recent ones that are going to expire, so. They've taken it fairly recent.
Is there value in having them do it again? Because I know that we've had previous violations, they're not from here, but from other vendors in town. And we've had, have you mandated they take recertification? Is there any value in that?
I believe that there could be, as far as the over-serving and witnessing somebody that is showing signs of intoxication. It takes practice, it takes practice for the officers on the street to recognize signs of intoxication, so.
Yeah, the enforcement, yeah, as you're practicing, yeah, it's the only way to learn sometimes, but, you know, you can't, yeah.
And he's failing them.
Yeah. Okay. I think this is a board action, so I think we'll just continue without public comment on this. Does the board have any recommendationary motions? Chief, please. Chief, please. I haven't got here, so I didn't know you had anything, go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. One thing I'm surprised to hear, as the owner Greg say, is that his responsibility ends at the door. We all know that if anything happened to one of those individuals, there'd be a direct line right back to you. So I would suggest that if anybody, any of your employees have any questions about somebody's ability to leave your establishment and get home safely, that you do engage us in that partnership and let us share some of that liability burden with you. Because we'd much rather lock someone up under protective custody than go to their car accident. I would strongly suggest that you tell your employees that, make sure that they take advantage of that.
Absolutely. If I may, the chairman, that would be one of the points that I made, that it seemed to exit this building means you're exiting onto one of the most busy, the busiest streets in town on the common of the community. So I really think that wherever that, however that transition occurs, I think that's going to be better.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I ask a question? I do, it's a, it's a, it's a board decision, so. You have deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, I don't get it. I have a couple of questions for Detective Sergeant.
It's more like we've had our question, we've had our deliberation, now we're going on to that.
I'm the resident here on Littleton.
Deputy chief?
Mr. Chairman, I'm the resident here on Littleton, I have a couple of questions.
Deputy chief?
Well, one thing that Greg wasn't able to take advantage of, which I'm sure Sergeant Patterson and myself will be glad to set up, was we actually had a meeting with all the liquor serving establishments before Greg opened and all their, the bartenders and managers came in and met with us. So they actually know what to expect if one of the liquor agents or one of the officers come in and what we're going to be looking for and so it kind of breaks down that barrier, we know who's who and so on. We certainly would also set that up, which I think would probably be something we need to do sooner rather than later.
So, Keith, am I required to say that according to Master General law, chapter 138, section 64, the board may find a violation upon satisfactory proof. We don't need the higher standard of proof beyond reasonable doubt. So, we only, we don't need, we just need to hear the, hear from the two parties and we can make a decision.
That's the standard and there's the proposed sets of motions that the town council has drafted for your use. The first is to, is to, for you to make a finding of fact whether the violations occurred or not. And then if you find that it did, then you go to the penalty phase of, you know, and even if the penalty is, is a warning, you want to have that as a formal, you want to adopt that as a formal action as part of the record, especially if they're, you know, if they're, God forbid, there were future violations, then you, you know, your policy progressive discipline would say, one at first and then something more substantial after that. And it is, as the chair has intimated, it's a public, it's a, it's a hearing that's in public, it's not a public hearing. The due process rights are the ones that the licensee has, he had to have notice of this hearing and he has the opportunity to cross-examine any of the witnesses.
Now, one thing we've dealt with other licensees in the past is the suspension of license with a stay. You want to, what do we do, like a sixty month?
An abeyance?
What's that? Yeah, whatever we do, I mean, I don't know if we, that's another thing that's on the table that we've done in the past with other licensees, not for this violation. I think it was similar, over-serving violation that we had, but.
A question about process here. Do we close the hearing on this and then do the deliberative phase? On your, on the matter of your fact finding, you, you could close the hearing.
Okay.
And so, is determining that there's been a violation or not a violation, is that a motion and a vote?
Yes, that's number one. In your, the proposed motion would be to find that satisfactory proof.
But that would come after we close?
Close a hearing and then you deliberate whether you find that it did or did not. On the standard of satisfaction.
So we close the hearing, then we find out if we did have a violation and then we make a motion, by the way, what we're going to do to the?
And I would move to close the hearing.
Second?
Motion.
I have one question for the detective, if that's okay.
Okay.
Just from my own knowledge, when someone is intoxicated, legally intoxicated, I'm speaking in the second case in this one. But actions deemed proper, I mean, obviously he wasn't taken into protective custody, he can just be released? This is just a question for me because I don't understand.
If, if the person that is deemed to be intoxicated is with another responsible party that is deemed not to be, that is sober and responsible for the person, they can be released to that party, yes.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Motion made in second to close a public hearing, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Aye.
So now we're going to find, we're going to make the motion whether or not there's satisfactory proof. I think it's a thin line whether or not there was, I mean, I guess there was a violation. I just think it's very difficult to detect in every situation, I just think it's just going to.
I think an absolute clear line, there was a violation.
Yeah, 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 no, I know, I, I'm there too, I guess. I would say it was very difficult to assess, but yes, there was a violation, so. I'm on board with that.
I agree, I think it was very easy to assess, Alex.
To assess what, whether there was a violation or whether or not there was?
Satisfactory proof of the licensee did sell alcohol.
We all, we all agree that. Oh, I agree, yeah, I agree with that.
Look for motion?
Sure.
We think the board is likely to vote to find satisfactory proof that licensee Carmen Fordsen, Quiber BFers, manager, Public Carmen, 486 King Street, did sell alcohol to intoxicated person on July 12th, July 26th, 2013 in violation of Master General law, chapter 138, subsection 69. In further.
You could just stop there.
We want to do it at a time.
Stop there for now.
Second.
Motion made in second to find that there was a violation by the licensee Greg Ellers. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay.
Aye, sorry.
In further, move that the board is likely to vote pursuant to Master General law, chapter 138, subsection 23, answer people to.
Well, we should deliberate this, this has to be deliberated, yeah.
And these are all four choices, Keith?
Those are the four that the statute gives you. And I think that has modified, suspend, revoke, cancel. If the, if the proposed, the recommended solution is a, is a warning. So, you could.
Well, is it kind of like that, you know, once you have a determination, you only have two things you can do? I mean, you only have those four options, or is there, I don't see warning here, I mean, is there? You know, I mean, I understand a warning situation, but it's like the dog here, you're only two options.
Why don't we just vote what we think should happen?
Yeah, no, why don't we just, I don't know, we just got something to start on.
Yeah, well, but the board's own policy says that a warning is an option.
Does that supersede state law?
Sounds like it might.
The policy is a guide, however. And so we have, we have, the way I read it, we have pretty much an unlimited number of options that we can work with here.
Okay, but, but in the Master General law?
I think a warning, it doesn't fall into any other category, I think it would be considered a modification of a license, so.
You as a local licensing authority is what it's in front of now? In your policy?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, I think it's the question of the time, now we are, in the Master General law.
If you took an action, like, let's say if you voted to issue a warning, that, that warning would be appealable to, to the state AVCC. If the, if a licensee took issue and didn't think he'd done anything wrong and does not even want a warning, they could appeal that, the expulsion from their record.
We? Allow speeches?
And again, I'll preface my remarks by, I'm a hundred percent in favor of business, but we have two incidents. They're two weeks apart. They're similar incidents, they're in the center of town. In each case, somebody left the establishment, I don't think anybody argues that somebody left the establishment intoxicated. And our own policy guides us here to say that this would be a first violation of the suspend, as a six day suspension. And I reflect back on how we handled the sale of alcohol to minors, which was, you know, we had equally remorseful and willing to cooperate people in front of us. But I think one of the messages that we tried to deliver, and you all can disagree with me if you'd like, but we should have a no tolerance policy with anything like this. And so I have trouble coming to simply a warning. I would think of that, you know, maybe a warning if it happened once, it was caught, but it happened two weeks apart, there's plenty of time to discuss the issue and ramp up enforcement internally in the business and it happened again. And I understand those things are easy to slip by, I would never want to be in your position and own a business that did the same because it would, it would be difficult. But I find difficulty in simply issuing a warning. I would be more inclined to look at something like the following policy, which would be a six day suspension held in abeyance for a period of time that if there was another violation, the suspension would automatically be administered.
I think a sufficient warning would be a two day suspension with, to be stayed unless there was another violation within the next twelve months.
Actually, a suspension?
No, the suspension is, in the, hey, it's a, whatever we use, a two day suspension, because it says up to six days, so I'd say a two day suspension, you know, which would be, wait, suspended, a suspended suspension for twelve months, pending no further violations.
I think we as a board just found that there have been two instances, despite Detective Patterson's recommendation that we take them as one, I see them as two separate incidents. I see also three separate employees. It wasn't just Judy who served on the 12th and then the 22nd. It was Judy and Tonya and Christina, I believe. So I see, I see three potential weak links in the chain as far as identifying intoxication. I think a lot of people liken identifying intoxication to, you know, identifying what pornography is. You can't define it, but when you see it, you know it. And it seems to me with a highly regulated business of serving alcohol, that the standards have to be really high. I would like to see this board handle this as not one, but two separate incidents.
We already voted it as one though, didn't we?
No.
The first one, didn't you vote that it was on both?
You found both in the two offenses.
Oh, we didn't call it, it was one, okay.
I think the difference here is if this was a single incident and the owner had pursued relentlessly a solution, the second incident might have been avoided because there is two weeks' time difference between, so I don't, I don't, I don't agree with a two day held in abeyance. I think, I think we follow the letter of our guideline and say, this is an offense. It could actually be considered a double offense. We're showing the spirit of cooperation by saying, all right, well, we'll, we'll take step one, first violation, six day suspension and we'll hold you to it and make sure you perform. And, and hold that in advance for, you know, whatever period of time. You've mentioned a year, that's fine with me. We have to deliver a message and it doesn't matter how honest or how well a person has tried to comply the violation occurred. And we can't have it, we can't have it here, we can't have it anyplace else.
Charlie, based on your statement, do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation? My recommendation would be that we follow the motion that we all just voted yea to, which was that there had been two violations, and that according to our own guidelines here, that's a seven to 15-day suspension.
So which, what are you recommending that we do? Do you have a recommendation? I said two days, Alex said something more, and then do you have an opposing, another proposal?
I see that we have policy here, Littleton, that says for a second violation, which we just voted on, that it'd be seven to 15 days, it sounds like it's not going to be much of a punishment anyhow, because it's not going to be exercised, it's going to be put on the back burner, so it doesn't really matter if we call it seven days or 15 days, or anything in that range.
It does, if you have no violation.
My, my concern is, this is the first time he's before us in any type of violation, so, you know, yeah, there were two incidents, incidents that, that occurred in the two weeks span, but this is the first time in front of us, I think that a, you know, anywhere from two to six day in abeyance is, is fine.
I think our recommendation from the people on the ground who did the investigation have the best information possible also.
Yeah, in all honesty, if, if they had been separated, then I would consider it two, I, I would with, with police department's recommendation, and be a lot more educated on this than I am. The other thing is that, I see Greg as a honest business person starting a business off. I've been in there many times during my, my schedule, every time I've been in there, I've seen them working professionally, I wasn't there for those two instances, I don't, I don't know, but, uh, he has, he has come to us, he's, he's admitted that this fault, uh, they want to rectify the situation, and I would say a warning at this time is, is all that we really need, and that's, I hate to see, I'm so happy that the, the comment was vibrant, and he participates in everything, and, uh, I would call it slack, whatever you want to call it, I would, I would say right now, give, give him a warning and we take action if anything else doesn't occur.
But Joe, don't you say, think that by holding it in abeyance, that we're recognizing just that by doing that?
No, I have no problem with that, but I'm not going to say seven to 15 days like as Genesis, if someone wants to say a, a, a longer time is, is shorter than that, then I would, I would agree with it.
Would you agree to the six?
I'd be more inclined to stay with two, but I'd go somewhere between two and six or something like that.
I can't, we're, we're going below our first defense, and...
No, no, when I'm going below, when I'm going below, it says up to six days, doesn't say it has to be a six day.
We just voted that there was satisfactory proof that two instances occurred, separated by two weeks.
But we haven't had a hearing on, on the first ones, I mean, well, yeah.
But that doesn't mean that it happened.
I'm okay, like, like I said, between two and six, I'm...
Would you take six?
Would I take six? I, I, holding it in abeyance for, for a year?
I can do six, I have no problem with that. Jenna, would you take six?
I believe two violations have occurred, and that your own policy that was invented long before I got here says two violations are seven to 15 days, and again, it sounds like it's being held in abeyance, doesn't really matter, between six and seven, which is the policy this board came up with.
I see the holding in abeyance as, as a way of recognizing that he came here, he acknowledged he had a problem, he's willing to work with the police department, and, and I believe he's going to fix the problem. That's why I think an abeyance is okay.
I, I agree.
Other than, because I do believe in zero tolerance, so, you know, if I didn't think he was going to do that, I would be all over this, so.
I guess I'm just confused by policies that you established don't have any teeth, I have, I'm troubled by that.
Because we have a local business owner who has, who has taken steps, this is why I believe, I mean, we have a local business owner who's been a good business owner, who wants to be a good business owner, who is clearly remorseful and has clearly worked with somebody, that there may be some, some, some flexibility from a small town working with a small business owner, I believe that's what the rationale is.
Could, could I point out that, that your policy does say that these guidelines are general in nature and are not intended to restrict the local licensing authority from imposing any penalty that it may deem just, so I think your challenge tonight is, is for you to agree on what's just, and I'm hearing at least three that are in favor of six.
And I think a year is a long time, that's what the law makes it for.
Yeah, a year is a long time, and what you're saying is, in essence, that if there's a similar occurrence within a year, that the punishment that you're going to be out is, is your, is the six days.
With no question, well, yeah, no, that's a special license, that's not a, it's a search, this or for the, the search operation, just the legal.
Just the, the Chapter 138, right, legal license.
So you're saying then, if Detective Patterson comes before us and says, I've got another police report, then Mr. Eller gets no notice to the fact that he will be, have a suspension, and we just, as a matter of...
No, we still have, we still have the public hearing and find that he violated it first, and then...
Let's, let's find out, yeah. If it can be automatic in nature...
No, because, no, no, we can't define the violation, you're, you're holding it in abeyance.
No, because you have to, you have to... Where was the violation determine when, when the dates are served?
Because if he comes back, we're going to be talking about more than six days.
No, it's not if we hold it in abeyance, if we have, we, we may talk, but if we, the, the point that I understand is that, okay, let's say it's X days for 12 months, so for nine months, Detective Patterson has another report that says he is in violation, then he comes back for another hearing, we have to determine if he was in a violation, and then at that point, unless we change the vote, the suspension would be there right then, and then if there were...
We do have, we don't count.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I know, I do, I really did, I really finished saying everything should improve everything I said before, and then...
That's not giving illegal advice.
Yeah, 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 so, and then at that point, we could either, you either serve the two days or most of the...
That almost takes on the shape of, well, if he comes in again with another potential vi, uh, violation, um, and we've held it in abeyance that the penalty is only six days, and if he comes in with another violation, but then the penalty is not going to be any six days.
And we have a hand in on that particular incident, so, what, what the abeyance is for is for these, these incidents. If, if he comes in and we find there is just cause, then we can make a determination on the six, automatic, then, that happens on that third incident, we have to make a determination as to what we want to, what we want to hand down.
Or, or have you planned the six? The purpose of the abeyance is, is if there is substantial evidence that he's made another violation, that automatically the six goes.
Then, right.
And then immediate, you know, whether we call emergency meeting the board and say, we have another credible case here, we're not going to hold a hearing, bang, you got the six days, now, this is a separate matter.
You still have to...
Yes.
But you start that hearing, you can't judge if those violations...
You have to begin with, for, on, to...
By the chief, my way? As our vice chairman. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Uh, I don't believe that you can find two separate violations within the same hearing. You can't take a person to court on two violations of operating under the influence and find them guilty of the second offense before you find them guilty of the first offense. Now, you have to find a violation of the first one, and then a violation of the second one, in order to treat it as second, uh, second offense and dole out that punishment. So I don't believe that you can deceive. I also would support the six days held in abeyance for a year, although that is somewhat contrary to what the board has done in similar cases in the past. So the board also has to be careful of the way the AVCC is going to look upon this in the event of an appeal.
We have not had a case like this, we've had a case of alcohol being sold to minors.
We had, we had to overserve, too. That's not...
We could, we could send through an email, let's make it, and explain that we have had incidents like this.
Yeah.
Last time you did it, the direction was for, for a tip train, because we hadn't, we hadn't done that before with licensees.
Uh, would you like to correct me, or give us any advice, Town Council?
I'm not...
Or, no advice, but I walked in, you know, two minutes ago, so I think you're a little
farther down the road.
So you have to hold two hearings, is, is sort of what I'm getting from you, we can't, we can't find the second DUI unless there's been a conviction on the first, does that mean we should be holding two hearings? Because if that's the case, and we just handled the, the 12th of July now, and you come back next week for the, or a couple weeks from now, for the 26th of July, we're going to be hard pressed not to find a second violation.
Well, the question you're asking is, how do you apply language in the selectman's policy? There's nothing in the law that says that you can't have two offenses occurring one hearing.
Yeah.
It's your, it's your, I think what we're stumbling over maybe is, how do we read language in the selectman's policy which differentiates between first violation and a second violation? Are you allowed to consider what happened on July 12th as the first violation, which you found happened, and, and then July 26th, can that be considered this is the second violation?
Right.
Which you indicated, I, I don't, frankly, I don't see why you can't.
Right.
So then should we just talk...
But it's only your, but, but as an individual. But it gets back to your policy and the broad language that says that, uh, your main policy goal is to impose any penalty that you deem as just, so I don't, I don't think you, I don't think you need to necessarily get tripped up by the language in the policy. I think that, that if you focus on what is, what is just for the, for the two violations that you just found, what's, what's the appropriate penalty that the majority of you can agree to? And, and what's on the table is the idea of six-day unpaid suspension, with that suspension being held in abeyance for one year period, and then the further issue we were having is, what standard does the board then apply if something happens in the next year? Is it automatically six days, is it another hearing to make the determination, and then on the third incident that is the subject of that hearing, does that, does the six days become the, the ceiling or the floor? So that's sort of where we are. Okay. So, what, so just a couple of thoughts, having just walked in, so are there, is there a penalty that you want to apply that only applies to a second violation that doesn't apply?
We're, we're just a split board right now. So some people believe that, you know, we have two violations, so we should be going to the higher violation of that, of the second step, which we in our policy would be a seven, 15-day suspension, and then some people are saying, well, you know, we're, we're comfortable with either a warning or a smaller suspension within abeyance.
We've already voted that there were two violations.
Okay.
Moved seconded and voted unanimously.
That there were two violations?
Correct.
Okay, so you've got two violations, but how you want to penalize those violations, I guess, is the next question. So are you trying to, so I, I guess I'm still missing it, so is half the board want to treat it as if there were two violations and wondered if there was just one violation?
No, we're all considering as, as two violations, whether or not, it's a, the number of days in abeyance is what's up for grabs, so, being deliberated.
I think I, I think we may have a way to try to deal with this. If we go on to the idea it's two violations, and by our own policy, we say the first violation is a period of up to six days, okay? And the second is a period of seven to 15. So considering the first violation, all the stuff that was there, if we offer the motion that the first violation is something like a two-day penalty, and the second violation is a seven-day penalty, and again, I'm in favor of holding it in, in abeyance, I'm just a little confused at how, that, how we immediately deliver that if there's a third violation.
Okay, here's more of five, Town Council can follow me. If there's a third viol, if there's a, the only thing, only this board can determine is there's a violation, so if there's evidence of a possible violation, the detective would bring that back to us, we would schedule a hearing, we'd hold a hearing, and if there were a third violation, then the board, then that would most likely be enacted, whether the violation, then there would be, have to be a discussion on whether or not there would be any other, any further penalties for the third violation. But, anything's open, I mean, we could also just say one violate, you know, but basically, my basic tenet is that the violation is not decided on until this board has a hearing.
I think what's at risk here is, is that if, we've already, we all agree there's two violations, so if it comes back during that period of abeyance, then our policy says at that point, we would consider re-revocation. Yeah, that's, that's right up there, that's pretty serious.
That's one option.
Um, and, so that's where we would be honing in on the discussion if it were to recur, um, because I think it would be inappropriate to say, well, time served is, is good enough, no, I'm, you know, this is...
That's if that could violation actually happens, too, right?
Yeah, that's if the violation happened, so it's, if something goes wrong, it's a pretty serious step up at that point, because if, if we, if we pay any attention to our policy, then, then the word revocation becomes part of the dialogue. And, so, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to find a way we can all sort of deliver the message that this can't occur, and allow the gentleman to stay in business and work hard to do, uh, do the things that are necessary to see that it doesn't happen again, um, and understanding that some of us want a two-day, a two-offense approach to this, so that's, I'm back to where I was, where we do two different, find, a different finding, a ratchet up finding for each one in both in abeyance.
Two and four, two for the first and four for the second.
Two and seven, just one and seven.
Well, the first, the way our policy is, the first violation is up to six days, okay? The second is violation seven to 15. So that's how I came up, well, if we do two on the first violation, and we take the minimum in the second violation of seven.
Why would we, if we're taking minimum in the second, why would we take minimum in the first, which is not necessarily any, and the second violation is seven? Neither of them. Somebody make a motion.
Can I just chime in?
Sure.
Okay, so here's what you're, here's what you're facing, so, it says that the first violation is up to a six-day suspension.
As a guideline.
As guideline, okay, so, um, yes, it says that, um, these guidelines are general in nature and are not intended to restrict the LLA from imposing any penalty that may be unjust.
Okay.
Fair enough. Okay, so first violation up to six days, second violation, seven to 15-day suspension, and third violation, revocation. Okay, so, you've got two violations, but you're really treating them in one hearing.
Right.
Okay. So I, so I was coming into this thinking that maybe you're going to have an appeal problem, but I don't think you do, I think, how you're spot on.
I would want to, I would want to assess some sort of, um, action with the first violation, I wouldn't want to say warning and then seven days, I would, I think this is a serious enough offense that, that, um, it rises above the warning phase.
The first violation rises above the violation?
Yeah.
I mean, the first violation rises above warning, that's what you're saying, the first violation rises above warning?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody make a motion, I don't know, we're going to get out of here.
All right, so, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Do you guys spell it out, one, for the first violation, one for the second?
I have no idea.
Instead of treating it as one violation and two violation, why don't you just treat it as there are two violations being discussed at this hearing, and then, so instead of saying first and second, so we don't fall into the trap of, did you need to hold a hearing for the first violation before you went to the second violation, you still have the ability to do what you want to do, just put them both together.
All right, move that the board is electing, um, vote pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 138, Subsection 23 and 64, to modify the rule, um, for both violations discussed tonight, um, with a zero suspension, uh, abeyance, and a seven-day, uh, seven-day suspension held in abeyance for 12 months for the package store, all alcohol license issues to Carmen Foods Inc., Gregory B. Ethers, manager, Public Carmen, 486 King Street, as follows. What I just said.
Well, I think somebody should say...
For both, for both, for both, why, why discuss? Tonight, yeah. A warning with zero suspension in the abeyance, and for the second, a warning with a seven-day suspension held in abeyance for 12 months. And further, to instruct the town administrator to mail the notice of this action, a statement of the reasons of such action, and a right-to-appeal notice to the licensee and the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission.
Did you say advance for 12 months?
Yes.
The only thing is, right before you spoke, town council said, treat it as one with one penalty. So.
So is it modify, you know, to, to suspend for seven days, but to, but said suspension be held in advance for 12 months?
Correct.
So bottom line. That's what I got.
So what new motion is the total of seven-day suspension?
Right, to be held in advance. Second the motion.
Motion been made second. Any further discussion? Always in favor of the said motion to suspend the license for Greg Elthers for seven days to be held in advance for 12 months? Always in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Did you hear me?
Okay.
Okay. Go back.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be two minutes, uh, three minutes recess.
Hey, where are you? I'm making you kind of tell the person.
We're thinking to me right now. Somebody asked why we wouldn't go, well, you asked me, I would say, somebody asked why we would be easier on this, and I think what's part of the thought was that he will feel sort of he's done is, he showed them play tryhard in the corrections and then he was actually, sorry, what happened? Sorry. I said, I think that's what he was showing us for some of those things a little bit.
Things are going good.
We're balanced. His calendar. More to come.
Twenty-fifth, I'm saying things coming fast.
Well, the, what he identified, for the first fiscal year, we need to find $4,000 to, 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 to the assumptions. But the broader, we can, it will be the seven ten together.
My cat turned down.
How are you bees? Sweet honey, I'm talking to Scott behind you. You do? Or you like the sidewalk? You, you forgot the traffic today, Scott.
Is this where the pen and notes or something?
I don't know, did they?
All right. The, what's the date, P? August 19th, 2013, Board of Selectmen's meeting is back in order. And we are on to 8/20, a town administrator and assistant town administrator for finance and budget, A, 2014 update, and 2015 our notice.
Just a couple of things to relay regarding the, the status of the budget for fiscal 14 and 15. The fiscal 2014 operating budget at town meetings stood at a deficit of about $97,000. We did not have final state aid figures and final local receipts calculated. We've since received a notification of the final state aid figures and we've closed out fiscal 13 and have framed up our local aid, our, sorry, our local receipts figure. So we are able to close the gap primarily through some additional state aid that we've received for chapter 70 and general municipal aid and a small increase in motor vehicle excise tax receipts that we've received. So we have a surplus of $226 for fiscal 2014. So we're, we're close in a balance. We're hoping that this would be close off $25,000 and that we wouldn't have to go back to a special town meeting and make budget adjustments or reductions or anything like that. So that is the good news for fiscal 14. Also for fiscal 14, we had planned on a snow and ice deficit. We had reserved $450,000. We did not use that in all of fiscal 2013. And in addition to that, we received some FEMA reimbursement for some storms that we had in prior years. So what is available of that, that reserve that we had for snow and ice is $378,000, almost $379,000. This is a one-time funding source because sometimes snow and ice will go over what we have budgeted for reserve and hasn't been asked. And in previous years, we've used it for one-time like expenditures for capital or we've put away in reserves. So I've provided you, and I won't walk through the, the entire exhaustive list, but some of the items that are coming up, possibly for this year, one of them, I know that the police and fire chiefs are here, that there's an issue with the radio system as a, as the communications between dispatch and the people out in the field. That might need to be addressed at somewhere between 70,000 and 90,000, but it's, it's in process, so there'd be more information forthcoming. There is a discussion around 300 committee meeting funding. There is also the sewer design funds that has been discussed somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000. That would be a borrowing authorization. Fire station design funds, again, somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of 600,000. Or you could appropriate this to the capital stabilization fund. If you do not put it somewhere, it will roll through to free cash for next year. So my recommendation is if you're not going to spend it on something, then you put it in the capital stabilization plan, fund account until you decide what you might want to spend it on, rather than wait for it to get certified for next year.
And you don't need to decide tonight, but you would need to decide by the time the special town meeting closes, so you want to make sure we had this briefing out. It's been shared with Thin Common, with the school committee as well, so they're aware that there's for one-time expenditures, about $378,000 that could be appropriated by the, the November special town meeting. And as Bonnie says, there's this list of items that you could consider and if you're not, and if, but if you decided you didn't want to proceed with any of those, you could take that money and put it in the capital reserve, capital stabilization fund. Where we've already got.
196.
Yeah, about 200, just under $200,000.
What about OPEP project? OPEP?
We could appropriate it to OPEP also.
Where are we at with this year's?
We've been ramping up that.
2013?
Six fifty is the appropriation.
2013?
Or fourteen.
Fourteen. Okay. And where, and what's the recommendation, we're putting 650,000, the recommendation is how much?
We should be putting somewhere in the neighborhood of 2 million annually. We have been ramping it up by 10% each year, which puts, puts us in a favorable light with our bond council and the rating agencies. And, and pretty aggressive compared to.
But overall, we're supposed to have over 30, over 30 million dollars. And OPEP, and we've only got a couple of.
What is the impact of OPEP supposed to be? I mean, they keep telling us, put this money away for when? When are all these post-employment, well, the post-employment benefits going to start?
From an actuarial standpoint, and then the, with the baby boomers.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what year that is, I don't know.
So what I'm saying is, if you put money away now, it's going to, it's going to grow, just like, as I was saying, where we do get some interest on it, whether it's a lot. So even though it's only 378, by the time we need it, it could be a million, which is still a drop in the bucket of what we're going to need.
But it's, yeah, by the time the workforce is of, you know, the demographic retirees versus current workforce, it's some, it's, you know, decade or two ahead from now.
About when I'm ready to retire.
The lay of reckoning will come.
Yeah. I'd like to throw, to get that thrown in there as an option. So where, going down the road for, where are we going next with this? Going to Thin Common with this next?
Yes.
Okay. So can we put that in there as one more option?
That's a good, that's a good suggestion.
I have a question about FEMA money. You, you put this in with capital, but what, what is the FEMA reimbursement for?
The FEMA reimbursement is for previous year's snowstorms. What we have to do is whatever deficit you're running in snow and ice, the, the division of local services makes you apply that FEMA money that you get in against that deficit. So it reduces the deficit, which basically if, if we didn't do that, we'd have less of a balance hearing and we'd have 100,000 less. The FEMA money would go into the general fund receipt. They just, they make you apply against it.
If we didn't have the FEMA reimbursement, then you would have.
Two hundred and eight.
Two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
But it's, but it's in this list, I guess I'm trying to, why is it?
No, it's, it's not in a list of potential expenditures. It's in the, it's in the Bonnie's calculation, how much revenue, how much money is there to be spent?
To be appropriated.
And, and it's because she had set aside 650,000 for snow and ice and we only needed to use 373. That would have normally been 276,000 left over, but there was another 101,000 that went to reduce it to. I think I got the math correct there.
So that is the capital update. For fiscal 2015 planning, we're just at the very preliminary stages for the capital and operating budgets and getting the worksheets updated and ready to distribute.
It's early August?
I know.
I mean, it's all, it's all the August and you're only at your home base?
It's time. I know, it should be done. Basically, I'm looking, I have a draft schedule that has been reviewed in its initial stages by the finance committee and was distributed to the school committee chairman. So this is going to be a work in progress. This will change as we go through the budget process. I'm sure it will change quite a bit, but it's a good starting point to get us to the tax classification hearing, the town meetings that are scheduled. It gets us our deadlines. We back up from those dates.
And we are looking, it says a joint meeting of the big three committees for September 30th. It would also be well for us to get together on the 16th because especially if you've got almost $100,000 to spend, I know that Thin Common School Committee will want to help, help you decide or what, offer their suggestions before the warrant closes, so we want to, and we have some things to talk to them about, like collective bargaining strategy that we can do together on the 16th.
So this is number 18 here for the November 16th, that's the mother of our meetings. The, the one where everybody's in?
Yes, that's the Saturday.
Saturday, November 18th. Yeah, that's our, they were on budget review. That went, that went, that was a great use of a day last night when we did that.
And then 17. So we're talking September 16th for the joint meeting of all three?
Yeah.
Now, one thing that Paul Adella has said to me is that he wants to, before we call a joint meeting, he wants to make sure that there's a meeting, that they have a meeting before then, so that he can review and things like that.
They meet on the 12th. The school committee has a meeting on the 12th, I know. And so he had, he had suggested the following week, which, of the 16th, which works for us because we've.
Okay, so all this is the same when we're talking about an email. All right.
Yeah, and he was fine with the 16th.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure, make him, make sure Kim PJ happy.
He's been.
Well, he'd be happy, I've been told in the years.
Is that right?
I've been told.
Yeah.
And basically, what we're looking to do for fiscal 2015 is solicit two different budget versions, the level staffing budget, which basically just retains the existing staffing levels that we have currently with the staff increases that we do and the zero COLA. Well, we'll find that expenses at the fiscal 2014 amount and a mission budget or a department goal budget, basically, what the departments feel would be the service level that they need to provide the community at. This would take into consideration any increases in staffing for, you know, the fire department, the additional personnel that they were looking to bring on in fiscal 2015, which may be grant-funded, but it would incorporate that in the budget documents. And again, while we're not sure what level of service we can provide, if, if any, in the mission budget, I think it's helpful to identify those service levels and put a cost on them so that we'll know if anything is available.
Are you finding your 2015 planning is easier now with the staffing and all the new contracts that we've?
It is. I mean, the, the worksheets already have all of the COLAs, and not COLAs, staff increases incorporated. It, it projects out nicely for the five years. I can see, you know, assuming the same level of staffing and the same personnel, what the, what the personnel costs are going to be. So it's, it's working out really well.
It's all in?
Thank you.
Next is to call a special town meeting starting Monday tonight. We're not, sir, if you don't need to insert articles tonight, no. You want to, you can start doing it, but you, you, you will be strapped to the chairs on the 16th of September.
For our special time meeting, move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to last general law, chapter 39, subsection 10, across special town meeting on Monday, for Monday, November 4, 2013, at 7:00 PM, in Charles Phillips' Cage, in Mason, with the Middle School, at 5 U Street. With a warrant there for, to open forthwith and close on Friday, September 20, 2013, add number.
Second.
Motion to be made in second, called the special town meeting for Monday, November 24, 2013. Always in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. opposed?
That's your meeting on September 16th, right?
Yes.
Yes. And we both take attendance. So these are the remainder of the special town meeting, the voters' vote. Ready for a motion?
I believe so. Do you want to discuss?
The issues, eh? Please, the House of Representatives vote pursuant to the article 10 of November 14, 2011, special town meeting, and article 19 of the May 6, 2013, annual town meeting, made in accordance with the tax title of the lot sales program adopted December 2011, to approve the sale of the following tax purposes in the execution by the Board of Selectmen approved by town council. Lot number one, lot U 10, no, lot U 12 dash 123 dash zero comprised of .092 acres, 4,000 point one square feet, on the middle section, for the sale price of 4,323.74, 323.74. Number two lot, U 12 dash 115 dash zero comprised of .05 acres, 2,000 square feet on pine road, for a lot of salad walls, for the sale price of 2,449.69 cents. Number three lot, U 15 dash 182 dash zero comprised of .092 acres, 4,000 point one square feet, on the middle section, for a lot of radium and koreznic, for the sale price of 4,670.74.
Motion made in second. Always in favor, signify by saying aye? All right, opposed? Keith, can you, or can you ask town treasurer for an update on the university drive lot? I know what you're talking about. It was going to be in the assessors, maybe it'll be in the auction, and then it's going to go off to auction?
Give you an update.
Okay.
Actually, we, we just finished with Tom's office, the documentation to put it out for auction. So I'm expecting to do, I'm getting the advertising schedule together with the newspaper. It should be out in about a week and I've been in touch with the individual desks.
Okay.
So you will get all of those stuff.
No, auction, up to bid.
Up to bid.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Phil Harvey?
Yes.
All right, great. Okay. Are we on 6D?
Yep. We have a mutual aid agreement for Middlesex County Police Agency that the chief of police is.
Yes, Paul?
Good evening. This is a request of the board to authorize our enrollment in a mutual aid agreement with all of the towns within Middlesex County.
Yep, we have a mutual aid agreement for Middlesex County Police Agencies, the chief of police is the candidate.
Good evening, this is a request of the board to authorize our enrollment in a mutual aid agreement with all of the towns within Middlesex County. This is an issue that has been going on since nineteen ninety, actually. Prior to nineteen ninety, a quick, a quick overview, if we had someone speeding in Littleton and we followed them into an adjacent jurisdiction, we had the right to stop them. If we had probable cause to arrest them for drunk driving, we could make the arrest. In nineteen ninety, a case took place and there was a ruling stating that because it was outside of our geographic jurisdiction, we could no longer act in that manner. So if we found this individual to be intoxicated, we could not arrest them. We also could not, we would have to, but we would contact the adjacent police department, but they could not arrest them because the stop would be deemed illegal. So this agreement would allow police officers that are actively on duty, not off duty, not in loan vehicles, not walking down the sidewalk, but someone that is working for the town of Littleton on duty to continue into the jurisdiction next door, our contiguous jurisdictions, or any of the jurisdictions within Middlesex County and exercise their police powers if they were on duty.
In only that matter? In only the matter of this?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So it's not like, I think they were buying climate rules and they get across the state line and they wave at the cops? It's not like that, it's what it used to be?
No, state line.
Yeah, but that's, yeah.
Town, town.
Yeah, that's what it used to be, yeah.
If you, if you reach.
So now, how do we, does this, does this same agreement allow other, every other town or city to come to the same Littleton?
In Middlesex County, yes, we're at the end of Middlesex County.
But it's a board document, we do both, we get the mutual.
That's correct, that's correct. And we have similar agreements with all the municipalities that belong to Nemelec. We have fifty-two municipalities. We also have the similar agreement with Semelac, which is Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council, which goes west of us.
Okay, so that takes care of Havens?
Yes.
That's down in Worcester, can I read it?
Havens and Worcester.
Anybody else?
Just one quick question. So this is only as something that's occurring in our jurisdiction in order to carry it out when it exits our jurisdiction into another jurisdiction?
Actually, no. If, if one of our cruisers was making a loop, like to get over to Sanders Point Road, we have to go into air. If that officer is working in Littleton as a, an assigned officer and may see an individual breaking the law in air, they could act, notify air and act as a police officer in air.
So it can be an incident unrelated?
That does not start in Littleton, that's correct, that's correct.
I, probably unsurprising to you, Chief Kelly, have some issues with this.
Not surprised at all.
I'm curious as to why, if our townspeople on May fifth, two thousand and three, voted unanimously unanimously to accept this, why does it need a ten and a half year delay in having this implemented?
Because they have, they have tried to do it legislatively and they haven't been able to do it legislatively.
Who's they? What do you mean they've tried?
The legislature.
They've tried to do what?
Different organizations have tried to introduce legislation through the legislature to address this issue, they have not done it.
But, but this is not the first mutual aid agreement that has, that brought for this board?
Correct.
They've approved other ones for other, you know, where we operate.
So the other ones that have been approved in the past, do those cover the contiguous towns to Littleton? All of them? All the towns?
Yes, they're in Nemelec.
So why do we need this?
If they go beyond the contiguous towns.
So you're saying that when the police went down to, on that field trip last year, that if they were just about leaving the state, that if, say, the town of Douglas, which is on the border?
Is that?
They saw someone? No.
Wouldn't have.
Okay, so anyone within Middlesex County, so they could be up in Lowell?
That's correct.
Going to court?
Go to Cambridge, yeah.
So I, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say I'm probably the only one in the room who's actually read the case. Has anyone read the case, you read the case? The LeBlanc case? The LeBlanc case is an old case and.
That's correct.
It's from nineteen ninety and the Supreme Judicial Court was very clear by saying that the court is concerned about claims where constitutional rights would be violated and the court, oh, kind, that a police officer's conduct in excess of his authority. Littleton police officers are charged with the authority of being police officers within the municipality of Littleton. The court was concerned that, that a police officer having the lawful authority outside of his or her jurisdiction is closely associated with infringing on the constitutional rights of those people in those other municipalities. And my feeling about it is that if Littleton police officers want to be like state troopers, they should be trained as state troopers so that when they go over to air, they will be able to arrest and effectuate and the enforcement and stop and seizure and all those sorts of things that police officers are permitted to doing. But the police officers that have come before this board for appointment and your approval and all that have been, have taken an oath to represent our town, in our town. And I have, I have issues with the idea that that would be expanded outside of the municipality.
Okay, may I? State police officers are not trained differently than we are. Actually, the wide breadth of experience that municipal police officers overshadows the experiences that these state police have. So I would suggest that our training is and experience is better. We would still primarily serve as police officers to the townspeople of Littleton. My officers would not be venturing over into the town of Air in Mark cruisers while they're on duty in Littleton just to stop vehicles over an air or any other contiguous town. So your suggestion that they would purposefully take part in extraterritorial activities and run amok is not the case.
That wasn't my suggestion. My concern is that when the Littleton police go to either the Lowell Superior Court to testify or the Air District Court to testify, because those are the courts that handle Littleton cases, my concern is that on duty police officers will be doing more than what they were charged into oath to do.
I would strongly disagree with that. The police officer that is going to court is not assigned to patrol, they're not driving a Mark Cruiser most of the time. And they would not participate in any enforcement other than making a phone call.
And this agreement that town council has approved as to form doesn't put any sort of obligation on them to do so? If they were to see something illegal happening in Chelmsford on the way up to court, no?
No more than they are now in Chelmsford as a member of Nemelec. Once again, I don't see my officers engaging in a law enforcement activity that's going to put them in danger outside of their jurisdiction without proper equipment. So, no, I, I don't see any, any obligation other than a moral obligation. I think all my officers would certainly pick up the phone.
Based on that discussion, the only part that I'm concerned with is, I, I completely agree that if somebody, if you're chasing somebody, you've got to go across town lines to get that person. You don't have to shut off the lights, you have to put the cruiser in park when you get to that town line. What, what I guess I'm understanding here is this goes a little further. And so I'm not sure what the, you know, I don't have the same comfort level with that. And I understand the value of mutual aid, nobody understands that better than I do. So I, you know, I'm, I'm a little torn as to, you know, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this thing. But what's your concern? Give me a specific concern, if you could. Well, I, well, I think the bigger point is, is are we taking on an obligation of, you know, if you send an officer to court, for all intents and purposes, they're on duty. They are acting, they're on the payroll, they're on duty, they're carrying a piece, they're, they're doing all the things that they're, that a cop would do. So, so now we're, we, whether, are we facing a duty to act if something's there or negligence if we don't act? Because essentially this agreement says we're across jurisdictional at this point. Is this agreement that much different than the agreements we've already signed? Is it only the map that's changed? Is it only that? It's only we had a map before and it has some communities that are in Middlesex County and some in other counties?
Inclusion of all communities.
And so it's just, you're just re growing your, your map, but that the, the, whatever it is that the, that the police officers are authorized to do under the existing agreements that have already been approved, it's actually changed in any way?
I think that's a fair statement, that the Nemelec agreement is in line with this, as is the, the Semelac agreement.
I think Nemelec, the difference is they're being activated for an incident, for a particular purpose. We have, and if they aren't activated for that purpose, they have no.
No, I think.
No standing.
But I think what you're saying, that's one thing, that Nemelec, there's an agreement that we provide mutual aid to Nemelec, but there's also an agreement that we are allowed to do exactly what this says. We can pursue into their towns and if there's a serious violation that they feel they want to respond to, whether they're doing something else, someone's getting a snob beat out on the sidewalk, they can go and respond to that. Where, you know, or if they see someone make a, make a rolling stop a stoplight, they can keep going if they want.
No, but there's a difference though. The LeBlanc case is very distinct on this. If you saw someone in Littleton, as you said, beating the slot out of someone and getting their car and drive away, you could follow them and you could have.
Sure, because it's an arrestable offense.
It's an arrestable offense.
That's correct.
But if you run a red light, which is a non-arrestable offense, the police can follow into another town. And my feeling about it is for non-arrestable offenses, you've got to let them go.
Okay.
I just, in layman's terms, I find, I'm bringing it like this, a common sense agreement that allows us to fulfill the duties that the police was supposed to be doing if, if they're in the, in the process of doing the duties and whether it's a car chase or whatever. It's, I hate this saying, we, we stop this and they do have to stop at the town line.
Let's not forget it's mutual.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, like you said, I think it's common sense, so.
It's also an extension of police powers by the board, only one of whom sits here with a law degree and understands what that means.
That's right, you know, we can either agree to vote on this, you know, a lot of people, what you can do is get a lot of the professionals that give you a recommendation, so that's one of that.
How many cripples now, that's two, chief, five, two other cripples, tops.
There are half agreements that, that's, that's do this, this is just expanding the territory. Okay, and I have a problem with the expansion of governmental action beyond municipal limits.
Well, I bet you shouldn't get into that agreement with acting to drive our seniors around.
Alright, yes.
Littleton Board of Selectmen vote for certain master in March after forty, subsection eighty, to authorize the town of Littleton to execute mutual aid agreement between the Littleton Police Department and all other condensing police agencies within Middlesex County.
Second. Washington, wait a second, with all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained?
No, that's not true. Is that your vote?
Yeah.
I'm not voting against it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. We also have the use of gift funds, you coming up for that? Deputy Chief King, if you want, sir?
Thank you, public brief. Basically, you know, three years ago, we started the Student Police Academy and I'll true with that, has become the police explorer program, which currently has fifteen, young men and women ages fifteen to eighteen. We rely somewhat, when we can, on the fire explorer bus, however, Chief Wazinski, I had that very, had some discussion about it today, the fire explorer bus is good for a long time, it certainly does not help, we do a lot of trading out of town with the police explorers and a lot of transport needs. So we're looking to spend ten thousand dollars on a gift account that came basically from, we started in two thousand and ten from some anonymous donations, buy a small handicap accessible bus. One of the reasons for this is the bigger global picture of not only using it for our police explorers, but having it available if we have an evacuation or, or if our, you know, any needs like that. One quick thing comes alive and Chief Wazinski and I, you know, remember vividly the daycare center on Great Road had a fire and we shut down Great Road, looked like the Pied Piper's as we had fifty young children walking down the roadway because they could no longer be in the daycare in the winter. They ran out of the non-condolent little gym area where something like this would have been, you know, obviously brought into service right away. We're bringing our explorer program up to a twenty, because of the waiting list we have that the Student Police Academy has, has generated. And this bus would obviously be owned by the police department, but available as the other states throughout the community if needed. So we're just looking for authorization. We have looked at several different buses and contacted, I've been in contact with Low Rapid Transit and also Bonnet Tuce, and they're looking to see if they're going to get rid of anything that fits our needs, including the state. Mr. Cobb has great reason to offer again to take it into the state if needed for paint and other items, if we need to have any work done on it. Obviously, we've been looking at a, a used bus. I would ask for your authorization to spend up to ten thousand dollars on the, this, what I believe is a noble cause.
Have you calculated the annual maintenance on this and how they're going to be taken care of?
Yes, basically, it's going to, it's going to roll into our, our cruiser maintenance budget as needed. The highway department, you know, has, you know, has the experience on the diesels, this would be a diesel and they, you know, said they would assist through it, well, more likely it would be a diesel, I think we're looking at so far.
How many explorers do you have now?
Fifteen.
Impressive group.
We're going to expand it up to twenty. Well, it's great participation, both in the community and also currently, you know, there's four offices within the department, they're advisors.
I have some thoughts. I obviously defer to you guys when it's police matters, but financial matters, I think I can weigh in on. I guess my concern is, it sounds like your explorer program is one, is one week, is that correct?
No, it's four, four, you need your hours. So it meets every two weeks.
Okay, and how often do you have to transport them?
Well, they go to, depends on what they're doing. They go to, you know, the old houses, the coves. It depends on where we're going or what we're doing. Normally, at least, probably once to twice a month, we're going somewhere. And we're going somewhere out of state probably once every other month. And right now, we're going in through three cruisers and two trucks and vehicles and, you know, it's, it's just, the fire explorer bus is not highway, you know, serviceable, so that's why we're looking for our own transportation.
Sorry, that changes that thought, okay, but I also wonder, is, is your wish to spend ten thousand dollars on the fire vehicle and, or a bus to get that ready to go for, for highway, for one thing?
We talked about that, no, I mean, it's, it's got almost a quarter million miles on it.
Yeah.
As it, as it is and not really, no, it's not really practical. We've had some people researching these for us to, you know, get us one that's coming off the line early, not for bad reasons. Obviously, it's a used vehicle still, but, you know, it's, it's going to be.